Okay, welcome to City Council Meeting Spanish Fork Tuesday, January 16th, 2024. Thank you everybody for being in attendance here personally and online. And we'll get started like we always do here in Spanish Fork with a prayer or motivational message, followed by the pledge. And Councilman Took has our motivational message tonight, and then Councilwoman Beck will lead us in the pledge. Councilman Took.
All right, thank you very much. So this evening I've asked my stepfather, John Whittaker, to give the thought for us, and then my mother actually came to give the prayer. So we'll proceed accordingly. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, staff, I appreciate this opportunity. My wife asked me if I'd do this, and I said, yeah, we come out here every Tuesday. And she said, will you give the thought? And I go, sure. Well, we come out here every Tuesday to go to the jail as our church calling, so it was kind of interesting. But I just wanted to talk about something really quick. And the thought is, is what if? What if we made the wrong decisions as to what we're going to do with what happens in Spanish Fork? What if we didn't have the opportunity to raise our kids in the way we should? What if we didn't listen to our neighbors and help our neighbors? And what if we didn't take the time to help the lady that lived next door that needed help? So I wanted to share a story with all of you. And this is about a young man that a few of us in this room know about. And I'm not going to mention his name right now, but I will at the end. But this young man was working on his Eagle project, and he had the opportunity to do his final Eagle project. And he decided to work on something here in Spanish. And I thought it was interesting. I called him last night, and I just asked him about this. I'm going to ask some questions and see if any of you know. But he came from a household where his parents weren't around very much. He was in a situation where he had to make decisions on his own. And yet through all this, he turned out to be a great young man. But I want to ask you a question, if I may, all of you. And this again is related to Spanish Fork, but the question is, is what takes 422 hours to build or to refurbish? What takes 750 to 1,000 gallons of water? About four yards of cement? About 37 gallons plus of paint? To paint something that is an icon of Spanish Fork? Do any of you have any idea? I think I explained it fairly well. But that's the cross up on the hill. And I don't know why I'm getting emotional, but this young man is my nephew. And this young man is Landon's cousin. And I just admire him for the fact that he was willing to put forth his time and effort to beautify such an icon here in Spanish Fork. I personally don't live here in Spanish Fork, but my wife has found a home that's not too far from Landon's. And every time we come out here, she wants to go look at it, see if it's been sold. And I tell her, well, if I can have four horses, a barn, a new trailer, and all that, I will move out here because I love what goes on out here. But again, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for Landon to be such a great stepson. I've known him quite a while. As a matter of fact, his dad asked me a few months ago if I would do something with him, and he and I are good friends. His name's Bill. But he said, John, will you do something with me if I ask? And I said, no, I don't know what it is. And we're kind of bantering back and forth. Landon didn't want to do it. His brother didn't want to do it. His son-in-law didn't want to do it. So I said, Bill, what is it? And he goes, jump out of an airplane, parachute. So my point with this is, I said, yes, absolutely. He was scared to death, but we had fun. And again, Spanish Fork to me is relationships and families as well. And again, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. And Kathy and I will be leaving soon to go to the jail. And I just want to let you guys also know how important it is for you guys to support those that are out in jail and trying to straighten up their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
To the jail or to jail?
Okay.
You got to pass out.
And he failed to mention we're there all day Sunday, too. So Landon has really missed out on the Sunday dinners lately for the last six years. I'd like to take this time now to just say a brief prayer as we begin our meeting tonight. Our kind and gracious Father in heaven, we are so thankful to be here. We're thankful for the many blessings that we have by living in this state, and especially for those of the people that are here tonight that are fortunate enough to live in Spanish Fork. It's a wonderful place. The people take care of each other. They help each other. They bring them up when they're down, and they know how to watch out for others. I'm grateful that they were there for me, and I'm grateful to have this opportunity to be a small part of making this a better place. We pray tonight, Heavenly Father, that the leaders, the newly elected leaders and the continuing leaders will listen and be willing to take to heart what is being said and be able to know that they are put in a position because of the judgments and the qualities that they have. Again, we're thankful for all the things that we are blessed with, and we say these things in the name of thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kathy.
I invite you all to stand and repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. My first time sitting here and looking down there and seeing Councilman Took, so missed the last meeting. Welcome, Councilman Carden, Councilman Took, and Councilwoman Beck. I was watching on TV you getting sworn in, and Councilman Took already passed the test. Once you're elected, you can't jump out of an airplane, Councilman Took, so I'm glad you said no to that invitation. You can do that later in life, but not while we need you here in Spanish Fork. So, okay, takes us to item four on our agenda. Mr. Nick Hanks is here for recognition for the rodeo, the Spanish Fork Fiesta Days Rodeo. And we'll pass it to you to give us this announcement. I don't know how many years we're going on in a row here, Nick, but this is a good run, I think, right?
This is a good run. Mayor and Council, thank you for letting me come tonight. I'm here to let you guys know that we were once again voted to be the top rodeo in the state of Utah through our Wilderness Circuit. Our rodeo is a member of the PRCA, the Professional Rodeo Cowboys Association, and our circuit is made up of Utah, Idaho, and Nevada. And as Mike kind of alluded to, I think we've won this, I know we've won it every year since I've been here, so from 2016 on. But it's a neat award because it's one that the contestants vote on. So we, based off of ticket sales, we kind of know the fans love the rodeo, but we, as a rodeo committee, put a lot of effort, energy into letting those contestants that are on the road all the time try to help them make their life better. We feed them and have some other things that we do for them. And so it's a pretty prestigious award to win. We're excited to have it.
Perfect. And, yeah, it was given up at the, where was that?
Up at the circuit finals in Heber.
In Heber, right?
Yep, and we didn't have the whole committee there to accept it. There was just a few of us, so we took the award with us down to the PRCA National Convention that our rodeo committee just attended and got a picture of us all with it there.
You're running out of space in your office of where to put these? Do you need to start putting them in the mayor's office?
You know what? We sure could. They're in our Fiesta Days Rodeo Hall of Fame at the High Chaparral. We have them all displayed, so, yeah.
Any questions for Nick?
Congratulations.
Great rodeo. Thank you, guys.
Any tickets? Did you find any tickets? Are we still sold out? We're still the Taylor Swift?
We're still sold out. Yep.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Appreciate you. Thanks. We can give Nick a round of applause for coming. Okay, takes us to item B under recognitions. Looks like we've got some people in the audience that are here to talk about this as well. But Chief, are you coming to introduce this award? Perfect. Good to see you.
Good to see you guys. Mayor, Council, thanks for having us tonight to be able to recognize some members in our community that did something pretty incredible that we see very few times successes in this part of our career of lives being saved, especially when they experience cardiac arrest. And this evening, we'd like to recognize some individuals that performed in a moment's notice and jumped into action to save somebody else's life while they were at work and some of them while they were shopping. And so if I could have Barbara Martinez, if she's here, come up. Mike Westover, Zach Powell, Amy Connors, Dennis Nesbit, and Kayla Showbinger. Awesome. If you guys just want to stand right up here and share with us who each of you are. I haven't ever met you all, so just say your names really quick.
Amy Connors.
Okay.
Barbara Martinez.
Kayla Showbinger.
Kayla. And is Christine Phillips with us? All right, Christine, do you feel like you can come forth, or do you want to just stay back there?
I'll just stay here.
Okay, good deal. So Christine is the recipient of these individuals' sharp and fast action to save her life. So on November 27th, Christine was in the Costco shopping, and had just paid for her items and was walking out towards, to get her receipt checked. And she collapsed and went into cardiac arrest. So these individuals and the other names that I mentioned rushed in to aid her and started CPR. One of the cool things about Costco, and I didn't know this, but Costco trains all of their employees at the time of hire in CPR. So it's, not a lot of companies do that, but Costco does, and these individuals were able to utilize that. Everyone jumped into action, some called 911, they located their AED, and were able to put pads on Christine and started that CPR, which is the most important part of resuscitation. As our team arrived on scene, they started to implement themselves into action as well and relieved all of these Costco staff. And Kayla, who is also a nurse and one of the people there shopping, was also aiding her, and they were able to get a pulse back. Once they got a pulse back, we were able to load her into our ambulance and transport her in what they call ROSC to Spanish Fork Hospital, which is return of spontaneous circulation, which is a good thing for people to get a pulse back and then take them to Spanish Fork Hospital, where we were able to get her stabilized and then transported her again up to Utah Valley Hospital, where she was able to be given higher level of care for three weeks. So Christine was in the hospital for three weeks undergoing care. And so pretty incredible thing to have happen. Only 10% of those people that go into cardiac arrest generally will survive, meaning they will walk out of the hospital 10%, which is a very small amount. Another awesome thing to note is that of those individuals that survive, 49 to 75% of them, when they are given CPR within three to five minutes, their chances of survival go up to 49 to 75%. Another crazy thing, and Christine probably doesn't know this, but of women who go into cardiac arrest, 23% of them are less likely to survive than a male gender would if they were to go into cardiac arrest. So some incredible work, some incredible individuals that we have working and living in our community to jump into action to save Christine's life, and I'm sure she's so appreciative of all of you for everything that you did, and we are as well. So you truly are heroes in our community, and we wanted you to be recognized for that. So thank you.
Yeah, they're going to want a picture with you.
Yeah, we're going to want a picture with you. That's all right. If you want to say anything, this is your time to shine. There's millions of people watching on television. Please.
I just wanted to say to Christine, I mean, this is really wonderful that you guys did this, but honestly, just that you're alive is the best gift that we could ever have. That is amazing, and it's so great to see you smiling here, so.
As a Costco employee, we've been very worried about Christine, and we are so blessed and so grateful, and everybody at Costco is cheering you on and so grateful that you're alive. So we're just really grateful that you're here. So come back and see us when you feel ready, okay?
I'm a nurse. I don't work at Costco. I just happened to be there that day, and I actually wasn't planning on going in Costco that day, but I felt like, why not? I was staying at home with my baby, so what else am I going to do? And then I went to Costco and I was about to leave, and I thought, you know what? I had just better check one more thing. And I wasn't planning on doing that, but it put me at the right place at the right time. So I want to thank God for giving me the opportunity to be in the right place at the right time. And I just hope that this inspires everybody. You don't have to be a nurse or a paramedic to know CPR, so I hope this inspires everybody to find a CPR class near them because you never know when you might need it.
Thank you. Thank you. If you'd all like to start with Chief over there, shake some hands, and then we'll get a picture up here. That'd be great.
I'm shopping. That's right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
That was a gift. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Those are awesome.
Thank you so much.
That's right. Good luck.
Come right up here, and Nick will get us all in a picture and try to make the council look decent. You guys already look great.
All right, here we go. One, two, three, four, five. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Yeah. Got to repeat what Shane said to me off mic there. He says, I'm shopping at Costco all the time, right? That's a pretty good advertisement. If you're not a member of Costco, you ought to be. That's a lot of people that are trained to how to help out in need. And had a good visit with one of your coworkers today and mentioned that there was this award on the docket today, and he flat out said, well, I just, I work with some pretty great people at Costco, so speaks a lot of you, and thank you for taking care of your fellow citizens. What a great outcome. So Christine, we're glad you're with us still, so thank you. We'll give it a second for people to exit onto the rest of their evening here. Takes us to item number five on our agenda, public comments section. This is the section of the council meeting where it doesn't have to be on the agenda, but anybody from the public could come up and address the mayor and council. So anybody that's here to speak to the city, please come up and take a few minutes and be involved in public comment if you'd like. Nobody's racing here. I'm looking at that row, you guys. Nobody? Huh? Okay. All right. Okay, that takes us to council comments. We will start over here on the left and work our way to the right tonight. Sorry, Councilman Carden, you went from one end to the other, though.
I know, that's right.
Yeah, so we'll start with Councilman Carden.
Shane said he's yielding all of his time to meet tonight, so.
Giving it all. You got it.
Buckle up. Yep. First, I want to talk about just some of my board assignments that I've been engaged with. The first was the airport board. We met again last month. There is a lot of activity at the airport, if you didn't know that, both from a development standpoint, also from just activities from people flying in and out of Spanish Fork. We have over 6,000 of those every month. Pretty exciting stuff. We also, one of the things that the airport board is working, and airport staff, Christian and his team are working really heavily on, is just safety, making sure the airport stays safe. We have a unique challenge with being the proximity to Provo's airport, which creates some different challenges, but they're working through those. And it's really awesome to see those professionals, especially the pilots, giving advice and working together. So thank you for what they're doing. It looks like Tyler's taking over. You got some pictures for me?
I think so. Okay. Well, that's really small, so it's okay, though. We'll start there. Last week, or last council meeting, Shane talked about how we don't, we haven't talked about snow very much because there hasn't been any, and then I think that gave the sign to get a lot of snow. And so last week, I was able to go spend some time with Jade Jensen on the snowplow. And I only did like a four-hour shift with him, and he was out there until 5:00 a.m., so just a little bit of a shift. But they do some hard, stinking work. And I think sometimes we get a little bit, I don't want to say annoyed, but we have this ordinance to not park on the street. That's not necessarily so they can get right up to your curb. It's so that they can get by safely. Those blades on those machines, this is them filling up with salt, which they have to do about every two, two and a half hours of plowing, but they, the blade on the front is 12 foot long, 12 feet long, and our roads are, how wide are they, Shane?
28 feet.
28 feet. So they're making a few passes if they're trying to hit the whole thing, and sometimes they can't because there's two cars parked side by side on the street, and they're having to navigate that. So I just want to thank them, Jade, Jamie, and Hayden, both, all three kept texting me and letting me know the weather situation and made sure that I was able to get on a snowplow. But it was really, really a good experience to see all the work and effort they do. Jade covers the Oaks area, which is really slick, up by John Mendenhall's house, and that hill is, it's slick. They have to get some salt down really quick or else it gets bad. So thank you, thank you for all the hours that they put in these last couple of weeks because I know that it hasn't been easy for them. Second thing that I wanted to talk about, or another thing I want to talk about, was the youth city council. My pictures came through really slow, and I apologize for that. So we have a few of them here tonight. The youth city council, they meet every month. They do a lot of service in our town. This last week, they had Dave Anderson come and speak to them about city management and community development. Every time that they meet together, they do a mock bill, they do some activities, and they talk about just things to make our city better. So thank you, thank you guys for coming to our city council meeting, but thank you for all the things that you do, you know, behind the scenes with the Easter egg harvest man hurrah, Fiesta Days, and tomorrow as you go up to the state capitol and represent our city up there. So thank you for what you guys do all the time in our city. Thank you, guys. Last committee I want to talk about is the arts council. So the corral has started practicing again after Christmas. They meet tonight at 7:00 p.m. at the Spanish Fork High School Choir Room. So for those of you who may leave the meeting early, you still have time to go practice in the corral. The youth theater just finished up doing 101 Dalmatians this last week. If you didn't get to see it, you missed out. There was 98 kids in the production and did a really fun performance of 101 Dalmatians. With that, they also announced what our community theater will be doing for the Fiesta Days. They will be doing SpongeBob, but I'm supposed to tell everybody that don't worry about Squidward because it's already been auditioned for and accepted, and Shane, they said that you can do it, so.
I've been practicing a lot.
Good. The last thing that I have is I'm going to invite Angela up here to come talk about a new thing that the arts council will be doing.
So we have a new event, a visual arts event. My name is Angela Eckhart. I'm actually the new arts council president for Spanish Fork. We have a new visual arts event that was funded in part by a RAP grant and then in partnership with the Spanish Fork Chamber of Commerce. In the end of January, so the 24th of January, people will be able to start registering for the event, and it's a mini masterpieces show. So they'll get, and I brought one for you guys, so get excited. We're going to invite you to be part of it. But they get a little board that looks like this, that just has Jessa on it, and they have to create an art piece that can only be a fourth of an inch bigger than this all the way around. Or they can do a little sculpture, too, that goes on a block. So they'll register, they'll come pick up a kit, and then it will come back. And then on March 4th, it will be displayed at six different businesses in Spanish Fork and a little kickoff celebration. So some little activities. I bought tiny, I like tiny things, it's a weird thing, but little paint kits. We're doing a little cornhole game. They're doing face paint, but really little on their face. Lots of things that date, and then there'll be prizes that go with that. So I brought you all a kit. They're exclusive. You can't even get them yet. But we're inviting the council to do an art piece for our show. So I'll help you register online when it's open, but for right now, I just wanted to bring you this and invite you. It's new. We don't know how it will go. It's a one-year thing for right now, part of our RAP grant, but we hope to continue on to have something to do in those months where there's not a lot going on. So I'm going to come bring you a kit.
Thank you. Are they all the same, or am I picking? Oh, okay. All right. I'm going to close my eyes anyway. It feels better.
She's the right one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angela.
You know, my name has never been under artist's name.
Angela, is there a theme or anything going with this?
I forgot. The theme is transformation. We actually have, we have some of the youth city council as part of our board, and someone, we have a group, we have a woman in her 70s, and then we have Celeste back here. And we were throwing out themes, and she said, those all sound like old people. And so she's helping keep us young. So our theme is just transformation, and that way you can make it whatever you want it to be, a transformation. So we also, I don't know if they're doing, we are doing, yeah, okay. And Celeste was Cruella in 101 Dalmatians. If you missed it, it was fabulous, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you.
Lots of things going on, especially in the arts council. It's the start of a fun year, so if you aren't involved in it, check out the Facebook page. I think most of our groups have those Facebook pages, so get involved. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Carden. Councilman Marshall.
I'll be quick. I didn't have any meetings in the last two weeks, so I have nothing to report there. Just to build in on what Jesse said, I just want to thank the folks that work for Spanish Fork City, whether it's EMS, the police, or year-out plowing roads. It's all treacherous this time of year, and I appreciate it so much. I think I said this last year, but one of the things I look forward to is a big old pile of snow at my driveway. That way I know that if I can get through that, now I'm clear. The roads are clear. I can get to wherever I want. All I have to worry about is my little 12-foot section, and it's fine. So feel free to put snow in my driveway all night long. I'm totally comfortable with that. So thank you for what you do. I know it takes away from your family all the time, but we all appreciate it greatly. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Marshall. Councilwoman Beck.
Celeste, I went to the Dalmatians on Saturday, and you look a lot different. I've never chosen you out of the crowd. So you were not the one I saw? Through, 3:00? 3:30?
She also had black and white hair.
I know, but I was like, even at that, I'm like, she really doesn't look like the Cruella I saw. But it was a But it was a really fun program. I took my grandkids, ages two and five, and it was a condensed version for the matinees, correct? So it was only 45 minutes long, and they both sat there totally intrigued. So you guys really did a fabulous job. Thanks for the opportunity. And then tomorrow, we will all be up at the capitol with a lot of the youth council as well. It's the Utah League of Cities and Towns Day at the capitol, and we are looking forward to listening to Governor Cox and meeting with a lot of our local representatives as they kick off this 45-day legislative session. I think we have built some really tremendous relationships with our local legislators, and we promise our residents that we will stay in close contact with them as they're working through issues and voicing our concerns as they're passing bills and so forth. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mayor. A few days ago, a week or so ago, we all, most of us had the opportunity to attend the public safety banquet. Want to thank Chief for that. I think just about every one of our officers received some type of recognition and an award. Spanish Fork has the best. We're grateful for what they do to help keep us safe and protect our community, so thank you. We had our senior board meeting this last week. Just a couple of things to mention there to talk a little bit more about snow removal. Seth, maybe you can pass this on, you don't need to comment, but maybe you can pass this on to the appropriate person. Katya's sneaking out. But somebody made the comment that they were extremely grateful for whoever it is that comes down to our senior center and clears the snow for them. And so if you could find out who that is and pass that along. Then we've got a Valentine's dance. If you are a senior in our community, you are not going to want to miss this. They hold this every year. It's a Valentine's dance. They recognize the Valentine's couple of the year, and that will be February 9th. And the last day to sign up for that is up until the 5th. They'll have their senior lunch on the 5th. Cost is $15 per person for members, $20 for non-members. They have a live band and lots of dancing. Our youth city council typically comes down to that and helps out, so we're grateful for them helping there. But yeah, if you're a senior in our community and you're looking for a good opportunity to mingle and socialize with other seniors, come, come to the Valentine's dance. And one last thing, I guess, we had our animal shelter board meeting today as well. I'll mention a few things there. Really, the main topic that we have every time we meet is how do we help encourage people to be responsible pet owners? They euthanized over 500 cats this last year, just as an example. Dogs as well, but over 500 cats had to be put down that were caught and trapped. And cat, I didn't know this until today, but feral cats are on, are considered an invasive species. So they're such a problem, such a huge problem in our community, that they've been labeled and listed as an invasive species. So if you own a dog, you own a cat, please be, please be responsible. Get them licensed, get them immunized, get their proper vaccines, do what you can to help, help control the pet population in our community. There's your Bob Barker moment for the night. That's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Euler. Councilman Barker, thank you. Councilman Took.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this last week, well, actually yesterday, there was an information session here just in the Heritage Room next door to us for the Miss Spanish Fork Pageant coming up here at the end of March, March 30th. An amazing opportunity for young women, so if you know anybody who's interested, it's still not too late to, to apply, if you will, and to compete. And I always love reminding myself and others that the Miss America Organization, which is the house, is the Miss Spanish Fork Organization, they're the biggest, largest benefactor of scholarships for women in the world. And so spread, spread the good, the good news, and let's get as many ladies as we can competing this year for Miss Spanish Fork. If you have any questions, you know, please let me know. Also, this last week, I was able to attend with Councilman Cardon, I'm slushing first, Councilman Jesse, the year-opening monthly board of directors meeting for the Chamber of Commerce, just next door in the Thurber Building. It was 7:00 a.m. It was, it was wonderful. There was plenty of people there, bright and early, but I loved it. Councilman Cardon did an amazing job passing the torch to me with serving with them. I've been a member for years with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm excited to get to work more closely with them. I also went to ribbon cutting for Costa Vida a couple of days ago. Councilman Beck was there, and we had a great time. They rebranded and a couple of other things, and they just love our community. And so that was, that was, that was fun to see and so many, so much support for that re, for that event, for the Chamber of Commerce. On the note of Chamber of Commerce, the last item I have is from our president, Kathleen Levitt, but she was unable to make it tonight with us, and so she asked me to share a few things with you all. And so in the next couple of days, we have a few notable items here. So on January 17th, tomorrow at noon, there is the Tag and Go Car Wash Ribbon Cutting. On January 18th at noon, there is the New Networking at the Hampton Inn here in Spanish Fork. The MAG and Utah, how do you say it, Utah Micro Loan, Micro Loan Fund, they're both presenting, and Chick-fil-A will be sponsoring Good Food. And then the following day, on January 19th at noon, we'll be celebrating the business of the month, which this month, it's Jersey Mike's Subs. And then the last item I have here is on January 24th, 6:30 p.m., will be the Chamber of Commerce's annual awards gala at the Amavi Event Center. Tickets are nearly sold out, so if you're interested, please get them soon for anyone who, you know, might not have gotten those yet. And again, if you have any questions about anything related to this, please reach out to me. And that is all I have.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Took. Appreciate it, everybody going to their board meetings, even though some of you aren't assigned to your boards yet. We'll get to that in the, in the, in the minutes, or excuse me, in the agenda item coming up. But I don't have anything for council comments, mayor comments, besides just how excited I am to serve these couple of years with everyone. And going forward, great council, great people. These are, are people that have stepped up and volunteered, throw their name in a hat to serve in local government, and nothing shows you that more like being involved in what we go to tomorrow at the Local Officials' Day and simply talking about the issues that are pertinent to Spanish Fork. All 249 cities in the state of Utah are doing the same thing, and basically, in a lot of ways, saying, "Hey, state, we know how to handle things in our cities. Maybe let us do that on some level." And so you'll, you'll not see a lot of these, you'll see them, you'll see them around town. We'll be around town, obviously, because we're doing everything that we do here. But the next 45 days, along with our legislators in the state, we'll be spending a lot of time up there on Capitol Hill, making sure good policy comes out of a good session. So thank you, everyone, for attending those meetings so far, and we'll get to, we'll get to an item. I'm going to shuffle things around on our agenda, so we'll go to the boards and committees right after the consent items before we get into public hearing section, and I'll read some names off there of our assignments, including all of us as council members and what we're assigned to. So if there's nothing else, we'll go to item number seven, the consent items. There's A and B, the minutes of last meeting and the change order of the Riverbank stabilization for Crab Creek. Any questions or concerns about the consent items?
I have a question, too.
Okay.
Jared, I guess, on Crab Creek. A couple of things. One, where does the money come from? 610,000 and change?
Why don't we pull that, just pull that out of consent?
Okay.
And then we can talk about it in the new business.
Do I make that motion?
Yeah. Yeah, just to.
Make a motion to pull item B out of consent.
To approve minus whatever that letter is.
Okay.
Then we can give it the time that it needs.
Go for it.
I move to approve consent item A and remove B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote to approve consent items A. Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Took?
Yes.
Councilman Cardon?
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Okay, that item's approved. Let me run to new business really quick.
Mayor, do you want to do the proclamation?
Oh, yep. I don't want to skip that, sorry. Did you think I was just, had something against six right now? Okay, so proclamation of Spanish Fork City Incorporation Day. We're coming up on incorporation day, so I'm going to read this incorporation statement that, that is our birthday coming up here on January 19th of Spanish Fork. So there we go. Let's see if I can get through this. It's a whole page. Proclamation of Spanish Fork City Incorporation Day. Whereas on January 19th, 1855, the act to incorporate Spanish Fork City was approved by Governor Brigham Young. Whereas for the past 169 years, Spanish Fork City has been a place of rich heritage, community pride, and important crossroads. Whereas the residents of Spanish Fork City, both past and present, have contributed to the growth, prosperity, and progress of our city. Whereas the individuals and families living in our city has grown to over 45,000. And whereas the city council, mayor, and residents of Spanish Fork City join together in celebrating the 169th anniversary of our city's incorporation, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor of Spanish Fork City, Utah, as follows. January 19th, 2024 shall be recognized as Spanish Fork City Incorporation Day. This proclamation shall be filed promptly with the Office of the City Recorder dated January 16th, 2024. Do we need a motion for that to be approved? Seth?
No, you, you proclaimed it.
So it's done.
I just proclaimed it.
Congratulations.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll support you in that.
Okay.
You bringing the cake and ice cream as well?
Yes. We've done.
Inviting all of our residents. Where is this party?
I don't know, Nick. You might, you know, we just set a party, and now you don't have any cake. You, you, do you have anything coming up? We did a video a couple of years ago. I pointed that out to Seth. We're not doing that again?
Well, it's only our 169th. I think next year, 170 is really a big deal, and we should have cake.
I said that, and then Seth said 175, so he.
Oh, my gosh, he's really going to kick it.
Yep.
170, really? Come on. Did you celebrate your?
At least cake.
70, she hasn't got there yet. All right.
I retreated as soon as it started coming.
Stop talking.
On the 19th of January, if nobody has a birthday and wants to celebrate that day for your own birthday, anybody got, January 19th is birthday? Who's closest? Anybody closest?
My granddaughter.
In that row right there.
My granddaughter and me.
Oh, really?
Ooh.
Wow.
I mean, not, not 1855.
You were almost the city manager and had the birthdate of the incorporation day of the city that you're.
January 22nd. But my granddaughter's the 19th, so she got it.
Okay, all right. There were, there were candy, there was candy in the drawer here for you guys that were closest.
Celeste, come and get it.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she's right.
All right, close enough.
She's right.
All right. Well, remember that, that he's celebrating the birthday of the city as well, on the 20th, but the day before. Okay, we'll, we'll move up to, before we go to public hearing, and before we go to public hearing, we'll go back to the, to the change order, item B. But we have some people here of, that have to do with some of the committees that we are assigned to, not only as elected officials, but as the public. So we're going to read through a few of these, and then we have one gentleman here that would, would like to pay some special attention to for, for his service with the arts council. So we're going to go through these, and when I get to the end of these, I'll entertain a motion to approve all the, the people that we are appointing to these boards or committees. And so hold your applause till the end, okay? Okay, with the airport board, we're going to reappoint Matt Taylor and Duane Barr. For the library board, we are going to appoint Zilia, Zilia? Who's the library board?
I am. I haven't.
Zilia Lopez, who's replacing Nicole Holidge. Takes the arts council, Angela Eckhart, we already heard from her. She is the president of the arts council. Adelise Flores is the secretary. Hey, there you are. Jeannie Taylor for visual arts. Matt Gilbert for events, specifically the Harvest Moon. BJ Wright with Spanish Fork Community Theater Board President. And reappointment of Karma Christensen. Reappointment of Sandy Coxson. And Ken Jensen will move to the past president position. Okay, before I come back to Ken in just a minute, I'm going to move to the senior board, the senior advisory board, Jan Carlisle as a reappointment. You're okay with that, Councilman Euler?
Absolutely, Jan. It's great.
Jennifer Olson, reappointment to the Miss Spanish Fork Pageant. Little Miss Spanish Fork Pageant, reappointing Rachaleen Talbot. And Parks and Recreation Committee, reappointment of Gary Briggs and Laura Olson. Is that right, Dale?
That's right.
Okay, that's right. There's Bronco. Hey, Bronco.
It's weird to see him in Italian, can't recognize him.
What's going on? Okay, I'm going to take just a minute and ask Ken Jensen to come up here, if you'd come up here, Mr. Ken. And I'm going to read a little bit about Ken Jensen. If you've been involved at any point in Spanish Fork Arts Council, you'll know Ken Jensen, who's stepping aside as the, as the president of the arts council. Ken joined the arts council in 2011, and he and his wife Kami, I assume that's who we're sitting by back there, Kami?
Correct.
Formed the Harvest Moon Theater Company as an extension of the Harvest Moon Hurrah Celebration. The HMTC performed comedy plays and featured community actors. He assisted with other HMH assignments, as well as headed the Adult Arts Education Committee for several years. In 2015, Ken took the role as president of the F, of the Spanish Fork Arts Council from Bjorn Pendleton. Ken continued the legacy of the organization and collaboration with community, city, and schools, helping to grow the arts in Spanish Fork. Ken and Kami also served on the Spanish Fork Community Theater Board. Spanish Fork Community Theater was in dire need of realignment to become more revenue neutral, as well as provide the community with high-quality entertainment that filled the auditorium. Ken and Kami produced and directed some of the best-received shows in the community over the past 10 years. Additionally, during Ken's tenure as president, Spanish Fork City launched a successful ballot referendum for the RAP tax. Ken spent many hours on social media, helping answer questions and provide information so citizens could be better informed regarding the needs of the arts community. The RAP tax was successfully passed, and Ken has served on the Proposal Review Committee representing the Spanish Fork Arts Council needs. Ken has volunteered many hours helping the Spanish Fork Arts Council organizations and events be successful, smoothly run, in budget, as well as meeting with the mayor, city councils, city committees, school administration, and the Parks and Recreation staff to help collaborate, work through problems, raise awareness and needs, improve funding, and grow the arts in Spanish Fork. Ken, before we give you a round of applause, I just want to personally say thanks for your passion. Anybody that knows the arts in Spanish Fork does have a lot to be thankful for, for you, for your time, your talents, your energy, sometimes your money that's been going into those projects. And really, my short time of being elected here has certainly seen a drastic improvement in, in the Spanish Fork arts, and it's a credit to you. So thank you so much for your service, and Spanish Fork is better because of it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, please, any, no, anything, you're up here, we gotta-
Well, it's just been an honor to serve, and, and one of the greatest things in, in serving on this council and being able to meet with the city council is just getting an inside view of, of what goes on in running a city, and how well Spanish Fork is run, and the support that, that the arts and the volunteers receive from the city council and the city staff. It's just been fantastic. There's some times that, that things have gotten a little feisty and such with various individuals, and not once that I feel like I didn't have the support of Parks and Rec and the, and the city council behind us. And it's just, it's been tremendous to grow it, to see the growth in the youth, the youth arts, and so many people just pleased with the productions and all that's gone on. So it's been, been a privilege and an honor.
Well, we're glad we're not completely losing you, right? You're still involved?
Yes.
But, but stepping aside is that president role, and, and we sure can't, can't say enough again about your, your passion and your commitment. You've, you've certainly made a difference in Spanish Fork. Anybody else? I know other people have had that assignment on the Arts Council. Jesse, you've been the last couple of years there?
Yeah. So, one of the things that I've noticed, Ken, and, and just the Arts Council in general, is how much they care, and how much they put their hearts and souls into what they do. The, we, we talk about volunteering and doing a lot of time, they, they bend over backwards. We look at the Harvest Moon, we'll choose that as the example, or even the Youth Arts Festival, just the hours of time of preparation that goes behind the scenes, the time of planning, but then also setting up and taking down, and then the event itself. From what I, you know, I've only been on there for a year. Thank you for what you've done. Thank you for setting the foundation for something that will continue going forward, and continuing to assist with it, because it doesn't, that, that knowledge, we need that knowledge base, we need that, that foundation to continue forward. So thank you, Ken.
You're welcome. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Maybe, Mayor, just a thought, you know, can I, reading through this, I had a hard time believing it's been 10 years since you were appointed. I'm sure you're like, no, it's been 15 or 30 or something.
A little while.
I mean, it's like, it's been a lot. But I, I remember in some of the discussions early on in the RAP tax, that you immediately jumped into those discussions and were very, very thoughtful in how you expressed your feelings about how this could help the arts. I, I've watched the, the committee function and the, and the arts receive a bunch of different things, and in terms of being able to grow some of the programming. And I think we've, we've seen through the years, all of those things grow, the, the Youth Arts Festival has just been tremendous. And my family loves going to the plays that we put on, and every year. I'm really grateful that you have a few extra dates outside of when I have to work the rodeo, because then I can get to the plays. But it's been amazing that you've been doing this for that long. And just an additional thank you from, from me as well, from, from our office and the work that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. I remember when the RAP tax was, was being discussed, and working with, with Bronco and Dale's office, and then going over to Orem and talking to them about how big of a difference it made for a bunch of different aspects of their city, but the, nobody got as geeked up as, as much as when we went to the, the Hale Center Theater and the Sarah Shell, and, and what that meant for their community in expanding the arts and, and that program. And so I remember coming back and having some brief discussions with, with you and your Arts Council people, and, and really being passionate about that did, did help that over the finish line to, our citizens are very generous and giving people, and taxes are not an easy thing, but, but the way you certainly did answer questions and be involved in those discussions made a huge difference in, in that being a reality. And now you, you look all over our community at the signs that, that say this was funded by the RAP tax, including some of your, your productions, and, and that's a big, big deal. And so, when we say the quality of life in Spanish Fork, the Arts Council's certainly a, a big part of it. And, and so it's a credit to you and your passion and, and furthering those. So we can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Ken, thanks for not moving out of Spanish Fork, keeping, keeping around here, man. All right, I'm going to read off the, the assignments, the committee assignments for the council here as well, and then we could entertain a motion that will accept all of your council assignments, your committee assignments there, as well as the committee assignments that I've already read off from those people. I'm assuming all those people knew they were getting involved in committees, or else they'd come here and protest, right? Bronco, you hope so? All right, well-
Maybe that's why Matt's here.
Oh, yeah, Matt, Matt, Matt's here not to protest.
Not to protest.
He's all right.
Okay.
Okay, good, that's good. All right, okay, for, we're going to start with Councilwoman Beck and the committee she's serving on for the, the next couple of years here. She's still on the Fiesta Days Executive Committee. She's on the Utah League of Cities and Towns Legislative Policy Committee. She's also one of the two council members now on the Airport Board, and she'll also serve on the Personnel Committee. Speak now or forever, hold your peace.
Are you reassigning someone else to Library?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Councilman Marshall, Personnel Committee, South Utah Valley Solid Waste District, the Veterans Council, Utah Lake, and the Wastewater Plant Advisory Committee. Councilman Euler, next. Councilman Euler, this is an exciting committee that's being regenerated, if you will, coming back up to the top. Oh, which I've got to add your names to the, to the list that, I've got your, your email here as well. But Kevin, Councilman Euler will serve on the Historical Committee, the official name, Historical Preservation-
Commission.
Commission, okay. The RAP Committee, we just talked about that. The Seniors Advisory Board, I can't believe they didn't kick you out, but they still want you.
I can't either, Bronco.
See, okay. The Animal Shelter, Councilman Barker is still passionate about the Animal Shelter. And then our two Water Agency Boards that are important, the Mount Nebo Water Agency and the South Utah Valley Municipal Water Association as well. You have any questions about those things, you can ask your dad.
All right. All right. Or Chris.
Or Chris. Maybe Jared.
Or Jared.
Maybe, okay. Councilman Carden. Councilman Carden will be assigned the Rotary Club, the Youth City Council, the Arts Council, and another one of two council members serving on the Airport Board. Councilman Took, all right, these aren't your last here, but it's not because these, everything else was taken, all right?
Good to know.
These are good assignments, and I know you've been to some of them already. But Councilman Took will be serving on the Miss Spanish, Spanish Fork Pageant Committee, on the Little Miss Spanish Fork Pageant Committee, has some experience in those things.
Do.
The Spanish Fork Salem Area Chamber of Commerce, the Parks and Recreation Committee, and the Library Board.
Okay.
Don't mess up the Library Board, she came from-
It's a good one, I'm going to be watching you land it.
Okay, she'll keep your eye on you. Okay, and then the committees that, that I'll continue to serve on, no changes here, the Fairgrounds Committee, the Fire Retirement Board, the Personnel Committee, the Rodeo Committee, the Utah Municipal Power Association, and the South Utah Valley Power Systems Board, SUVPS.
Mayor, just one thing.
Yes?
We do not have a seat on the Utah Lake Commission. So you can take that board.
Yeah, so, we're, are we, are we, are we trying to regain a seat? I mean, is it going to take an act of Congress? Because I'll call somebody.
I mean-
What's the deal?
Well, I think you ought to appoint the person you think that can get us back on.
Okay.
I mean, is that Shane, or is that?
Why did you say it like that?
Left it, he left it out there.
He did like, dot, 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 dot.
No, Shane's right, last year's legislative session took Spanish Fork off of the seat, out of the seat, adjusted it so that you had to have actual lakefront property, a connection to the lake. We actually do have that now, so we're eligible for it. I think it's a good question, though, do you want to keep an assignment there? And I think Shane probably has an opinion about whether or not we should continue to go to those meetings, even though we don't have a board, and we could certainly designate that. But it wouldn't be, how would you say that, Shane? It wouldn't be an official seat on their board, it would just be a-
Ex officio.
Yeah, it'd just be assigned to go and, and represent Spanish Fork in any way.
I certainly can do that, that's not a problem.
Okay. If you're still, if you're still able to do that, I think that's, it's an assignment that we ought to keep, to simply see what the session, I mean, with all the discussion and questions that were, I know, last year, the year before, about islands and bridges and everything else that could happen with Utah Lake, I think those drawings are being more and more visible by the public of roads that might eventually cross Utah Lake. And I think that's a discussion that, that we need to be a part of, as much as we can be a part of.
I will be there.
Dave, you can go too, if you don't have another meeting to go to, it'd be great.
I think Jared or, do you, Jared or Chris? Corey, that's right, Corey goes. Yeah, Corey Pierce.
Does he go too?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So that might, that might be a, a board that, that does go away, let's play it by ear for a little bit of, of 2024. Councilman Euler does have some names to, to be submitted for approval for the Spanish Fork Historical Preservation Committee. Those following names are himself as the council representative, Angela Beecher, Darla Talbot, Kristen Moss, and Caleb Pollak. Those correct?
Yep, those are right.
Okay. Again, citizens, before the, the council votes to approve these names, I would just again say thanks to, to everybody that's served on these committees. This is the real secret sauce of Spanish Fork, is being involved. If, if for any reason you are interested, please note who's over those committees. That represents nearly every week or every other week meetings here in Spanish Fork, so it's not just this meeting. But note the, the council member that's over that, please talk to them about getting involved and how you can get an agenda for the meetings coming up and, and be involved. The more people involved, the, the better the outcomes are. So thanks again for everybody's commitment so far, and your recommitment going forward to these boards. If anybody has any other questions or concerns about them, speak now or forever, hold your peace. But if you're okay with it, I would entertain a motion to approve all of those, except the, the appointments of yourselves and all of those fine volunteers.
I will go ahead and make a motion to accept the mayor's assignments and board, for the boards and committees for 2024.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Seconded, it's a tie, but we're going to go Councilman Marshall for, I was saying seniority, are we, is it seniority? Do you have, yeah, obviously you have seniority. You're the most senior on this council.
No.
I think pretty close, and we're going to say it is.
Okay.
Senior in age or service? I think senior in age, you have us.
Oh, I'm sure it's Shane.
Okay, Shane.
I'm sure it's me as well.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck. I haven't spent so long now, I can't remember, you made that motion?
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall seconded that motion to approve these appointments. This is a roll call vote, Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Perfect. The mayor's assignments for 2024 boards and committees are approved. Thank you, everybody, for your service, appreciate it. Okay, before we go to the public hearing section, we pulled off item B off consent items for a little bit more discussion of the riverbank stabilization for Crab Creek waterline. Maybe Mr. Johnson, is this question coming to you? Seth?
No, go, yeah, ask it again, sorry.
All right, I appreciate it, let me take a, a few minutes to talk about this. $610,000 is a large chunk of change, I think it's a good idea to chat a little bit about it. So first question is, where's the money coming from?
This is out of the water fund, and from its reserves, what you and I might call the savings account.
Okay, so we planned for a contingency like this, and we're using the money that we've set aside to do so?
Not necessarily, but yes. So, this project is associated with the river high water, and so this is an emergency project. So we don't really, we didn't really plan for the emergency, but that's, this is probably the specific reason why we do have that, that fund balance for what you and I, you know, might call a rainy day in terms of budgeting. And so this is probably one of the last projects that we have associated with the high waters from the spring, and this project specifically is to go back into an area that we did emergent work, as in, all we can do is this because of how the water is affecting the, the river channel at this moment in this place. Now that the water's stabilized, we're seeing how that emergent work is holding, it's not. And so we, we have to pull some of the rocks back, rebuild the, the bank a little bit, and then put the, what we would call the riprap or the rocks back.
So protective measures for the-
For the water line.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry. Go ahead. You mentioned the water line, do you want to explain to the public why this water line's important to Spanish Fork?
Yeah, it's Crab Creek Waterline, I was like, because it's drinking water? But I was like, I should stop being a smart aleck today. Forty, 45% of our drinking water, Jared, comes out of this water line. This harvests water from mountains in, in a couple of springs that we have, and brings it from above Birdseye, down along the Highway 89, then down Spanish Fork Canyon. So the pipe runs a long, long way, the pipe's been in the ground a while. And, yeah, to lose this resource would be, would be devastating to our drinking water system. And actually, in, in the high water, we lost a portion of this pipe, and we're able to put it back without any incident, and, and probably nobody knew about that. But it's been a probably a million and a half dollars or so of a challenge. We did get word on the 23rd of December, actually, I think we got word on the 24th, that President Biden has declared a disaster for the floods, has a presidential declaration, which opens up some FEMA reimbursement for things exactly like this. We don't know yet how much, that will get anything back, and if so, how much. We're hopeful, though, that we can get somewhere north of a million dollars back, which might be 50 to 75 cents on the dollar, but we'll, we'll see going forward, and that probably will take a couple of years before we actually get that. So we'll just have to spend out of our reserves and then hope we get that money back. But if we don't spend this money, and if we didn't spend the money in, in the high water time in, in May, we would have absolutely lost this resource.
44% of our drinking water.
Yeah, and, and probably some of the best, right? This is, this is spring water, and, and so when you go to the store and buy Geyser Springs, whatever, and this is that kind of spring type water, that's crisp, beautiful tasting, it's wonderful water.
Thank you.
Hard to get to, it's quite a drive.
Beautiful tasting, wonderful.
Beautiful tasting, I'm not sure that works, but it felt good, tasted good.
So, this is, this is a change order, not a new contract. So we're, we took existing pricing and just moved it downriver. Okay, did they honor it?
Yeah.
They just honored the pricing from last year? Okay. So it was competitively bid, we're adding to the, to the work?
Yeah.
Location, same bid items?
And then actually lowered. We, we identified a few things about the bid that we thought could be better, and they agreed, and I think in the end, the bid price came down about $100,000 from what the original change order bid was, so we were able to bring it down just a little bit more. Turn your mic on, Jared.
Yeah, it's actually a little bit lower than that, it's just going to come in at least $10,000 lower than this, but we left it at the bid amount.
Okay. All right. Thank you for listening.
So just maybe for information's sake, I think there were four specific spots along the river, maybe five, but at least four specific places along the river upstream, before you get to the Highway 89 connection there to Highway 6, where the river just eroded and eroded and continually got closer and closer to our water resource, which, you know, 10, 20, 30 years ago, there was 40 feet of, of land between where the, the water line was and the riverbank was, and, and over time, it's been eroded, and specifically this, this year, we lost a lot of ground in a number of places. And it got closer and closer. We totally take credit for saving Highway 6. Haven't really been able to get any traction with that statement, but we're working on it, because-
It just so happens the water lines between the water, the river-
And Highway 6, yep.
Okay, so you, we will always take credit for saving 6, because it's-
Absolutely, and that will probably be what we lead with on our presidential declaration documents.
U.S. 6.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
You won't see, I know during that, we've talked about this, as, as we met about these, these repairs being done, and we saw some great drone footage, we saw some great footage out there of work that was done mitigating and, and trying to be emergent response on the river during that crisis that we had last year. You won't see a lot of the footage, just as, as residents, and, and it's just not publicly out there, because you don't typically broadcast where your, your, your water lines are.
44% of your water is coming from-
44% of your water, it's a big deal for the community, and so just rest assured, our water comes from the canyon, this is in the canyon, and you don't, we don't want that pipe broken. That's a big deal for Spanish Fork City and, and for us that drink water here. So, you won't see a lot of footage of it going on, but rest assured, this, this is a repair that needs to happen to, to protect, and, and geez, we didn't think we were going[1721.23] And geez, we didn't think we were gonna get any snow this year, and now the last couple of weeks has made it. So we're gonna have another good year of water, so try to keep it off. Any other questions for staff or anybody about that? Okay, I would entertain a motion for item 7B.
I move that we approve change order 3A, Riverbank Stabilization for Crab Creek Water Line at six hundred and ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Took. A roll call vote here. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler. Yes. Perfect. Item 7B is approved. Takes us to the first public hearing item tonight, item 8A, the ordinance zone change and preliminary plat approval for the orchards, a master plan development with sixteen lots located at 911 South, 3400 East. Mr. David Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The subject property in this case is located north of the Quiet Valley Development, right on the boundary of Spanish Fork and Mapleton. On the right-hand side of the subdivision, as shown there, is the rail line that separates Mapleton and Spanish Fork. The subject property is zone R-115. That happened just, oh, within the last couple of months, at which time a previous version of a preliminary plat was approved. One of the conditions of approval that came with that had to do with the applicant modifying the plan to set aside some additional space. With the original approval, they had set aside some space for the prospect of adding a second rail line along the rail corridor that exists, like I said, along the eastern boundary of the subject property. And we really appreciate, I want to mention, the applicant moving forward to act on that condition, working with our staff. It was discovered subsequent to the council's approval of that version of a preliminary plat that there was a little bit more room needed than what we had originally thought. So the applicant went back, redesigned. The redesign effort had a little bit bigger impact on their, their development than what we anticipated. You might recall that with the earlier approval, there was a cul-de-sac of sorts on the east side, where now there's just the T-intersection with the street that will tie in both to what we think is a forthcoming street to the south with the development that's approved there, and eventually a street to the north as well. And all in all, as we looked at the different opportunities that existed for the developer to pursue, the original approval having been for a standard subdivision, they opted to do a master plan development. And with that, they've been able to redesign the project, use the space, in my view, a little bit more efficiently by taking the cul-de-sac portion out. They've been able to set aside additional space for the rail expansion on the east, and they've been able to include two additional lots. They've gone from fourteen lots with what's approved now to sixteen with this while meeting all of the requirements for master plan developments in the R-115 zone. In fact, our staff has reviewed the findings that must be met in order for the master plan development overlay to be approved, and we have found that this proposal meets those, or rather satisfies those findings. And with that, that's why we're back again, just a couple of months from the original approval to have this project approved as a master plan development with the master plan development overlay with sixteen lots instead of fourteen, but also with the additional land set aside for what we hope is the additional rail line in the corridor on the east side of the project. Both the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have reviewed this proposal with the amended or revised preliminary plat and the master plan development overlay, and each of those bodies have recommended that it be approved.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave before going into public hearing?
Dave, did the developments that are happening south of this development have any issues with the extra rail line and property and similar to what this development had?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So they had sufficient for the railroad with those developments?
Honestly, I don't recall exactly how much they, they needed to set aside. It's kind of curious, and we could pull up just the county land records and see that there is not a consistent right-of-way line identified along that rail corridor. So some projects certainly have had to set aside more and less than others. In fact, even I think Legacy Farms, I'm not sure that up there.
Yeah.
Any additional space was set aside, but we think there's sufficient.
Is it the railroad then that decides that?
I don't believe so. In fact, I think there is some question as to exactly what the railroad owns going through the corridor there.
Who, I guess in this, in this case with this development, where did it originate? Who asked, who asked for the?
We have a consultant that we use. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, the railroad north, the 400 North was already set wider. That's why Legacy Farms did not have to dedicate any. As the railroad south, the 400 North, they only had sixty feet, where we need ninety, something in that realm. So the railroad owns different right-of-ways throughout different sections in town.
Interesting. This preserves two tracks?
This preserves enough right-of-way for two tracks, yes.
And am I correct? Do we have a railroad advisor consultant, somebody like that, that we confer with?
Yes.
To make sure that we?
Yes, the, the size of the right-of-way that we're requiring came from our right-of-way, or our rural consultant.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, thank you.
Is the applicant here, would like to speak before we go into public hearing? Sure. Sir? Tell us your name if we, so we can get that on the record.
You bet. Richard McAllister with Mountainville Development Corporation. And I just wanted to say that, yeah, we're back because of the additional taking, which was the subject of what you just talked about, and happy to find a solution that didn't impair the rest of the development, and happy to work with the staff. And, yeah, the concern about the railroad is interesting because it's not consistent as it goes through there, as you know. But it's nice to work with the staff that's been able to help us find a solution to get around that.
Just real quick, you said taking in that statement. You're setting back that right-of-way. You're setting back from the, you're not giving that right-of-way up, though. Someone's gonna purchase from you in the future.
That's correct.
So no one's taking it necessarily. You're just, you're just setting back for future.
But as a property owner.
No, it's being dedicated.
I'll let Dave speak to that.
Oh, it's being dedicated? Okay.
With some of the adjustments, yeah.
Because of a master plan development?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's the, that's the benefit of the master plan development.
Right.
Okay, I got you. All right.
So maybe now, just to be clear, particularly in going from fourteen lots to sixteen, it's staff's understanding that this approval would therefore, in kind of a quid pro quo sort of a situation, provide the compensation to the property owner via the two additional lots for the additional rail right-of-way being dedicated to the city without additional compensation?
For the additional, I think that is true. Again, I'm, now you've put me into a situation where you're trying to ask a question, but there, it was always the intent from my understand to purchase from a sum of the railroad ground that's there. And this, the sixteen, if I understand it, the fourteen to sixteen was compensation for the additional taking.
Yeah, that's probably not how I remember it.
That's not my understanding. I'm sure that's something that we could work out.
Mr. Bogus, that was the?
Yeah, Mr. Bogus is the original. He's one of, and I come into the second hand. Sorry about that, but.
Yeah, that, same, that's not my understanding as well, and I feel like that, that part of the, the agreement, if you will, that part of the narrative happened a while ago, and then this is more the secondary. So I feel like we already crossed that bridge, and then we're dealing with this additional with, with this adjustment from fourteen to sixteen. But, I mean, if we need to get maybe Mr. Bogus back in the room, we can, we can do that. That's how, that's how I understood it as well.
And I'm not sure that this matters a lot, but our practice has been, when somebody's developing a standard subdivision for things like this, we are making arrangements for people to be compensated financially.
Understood.
To the south, where, for example, you have Quiet Valley and a project that Fieldstone got approved. Those were approved as master plan developments, and, and compensation wasn't provided outside of them being able to pull back and, at least in theory, develop those sites more densely as a particular type of development. To the north, we have made arrangements to have property owners compensated, but in those cases, they were standard subdivisions, or we were going back well after a project's approval and asking them to come to the table to cooperate. So I don't want to overthink it or overspeak here, but our practice has been with master plan developments to not make arrangements for people to be compensated outside of just the additional density.
The arrangement and the additional density. Yeah. Does that sound like something that you're okay with being approved tonight in the, in the sixteen-lot subdivision as a master plan development, or are you, you wanting to?
I don't have the authority to say that, no, there's no compensation due for more ground on top of that taking. And I don't, I don't, I can't answer that definitively for you, Mayor. I don't have that authority.
It wouldn't be a problem for staff if the council were to continue this?
Yeah.
To just have the conversations that we need to have to make sure everybody's on the same page, Mr. Bogus or anybody else?
Yeah, please, please do, because I don't want to, I don't want to say something here that all of a sudden comes back and.
Sure. We don't want you to be tied into something either. Yeah.
Yeah. My, my understanding was that originally, the ground as the first, the first taking, I've got to be careful with my words, but that was something that was going to be used. And then the second or additional ground that was in there, all of a sudden made the cul-de-sac plan not feasible to hit your ordinances and rules. So, yeah, it did, yeah, at some point. I don't have the authority to do that, but it also seems odd that we could just keep increasing the amount of ground and taking it away from the development without some type of compensating the developer for taking that ground. Maybe it's the wrong word, but I'd be glad to, I mean, we're.
Love to continue it, because, I mean, one of the findings, one of the conditions is a dedication to the city. So let's make sure we're all on the same page.
Appreciate that. Exactly. We're happy to do that.
We're gonna, we're gonna move ahead with the public hearing portion of this still to see if there's any other, any of the public that wants to speak to this. And, and if you're okay, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I move to go into public hearing.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall to go into public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay. We're in public hearing for item A. Is anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing for item 8A, and it sounds like the direction here, if there's no other questions for staff or the applicant here, it might be a good one to table here and revisit.
I move to table ordinance zone change and preliminary plat approval for the orchards, a master plan development.
Just curious, is it table or continue?
I don't know. I've heard both. I think continue is like for, you can specify a date, certain or an uncertain date, you know, whenever it's ready to come back. Table, I think, means the next meeting. That's how I've heard it, but I could be mistaken, too. I don't know.
So what I say was right or wrong?
I'm fine with it.
Comfortable, we can get to something, something by the next meeting? This table till the next meeting?
I hope so.
Okay.
Okay, motion on the table is to ta, or motion on the, whatever.
The table is table?
Yeah, we're gonna table the table. By Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Marshall to table item A. There's a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Okay. Item 8A is approved. Thank you, thank you to the applicant for being here. Thanks for the good questions. Takes to item B.
I don't know either.
Ordinance with this as an amendment, amendments to Title 15 to modify the city's regulation for tow yards and the uses allowed in the downtown commercial zone.
I think this is Dave again.
Yep. We'll give him a minute.
Mayor, can I just have you clarify? I think you said that 8A was approved.
Oh, excuse me.
But I think we completed discussion or whatever.
Yeah, sorry. Item 8A is not approved. It's tabled, and the motion was to table it, seconded, and a roll call vote was, was made to table item 8A. Thank you, Vaughn. Okay, Dave, item 8B.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present this tonight. We've made arrangements to hold a public hearing on these proposed amendments to Title 15. I'd ask that the council hear me out and then hold the public hearing, but also continue this item. There are a few things I think that we as staff need to do some additional research on before we ask you to make a decision on the proposed amendments as they stand. Simply put, we need to sort out some things relative to tow yards that, in my opinion, don't necessarily have to do with land use questions, but maybe some other things related to how they can impact communities. So again, let me just talk this through. I'll be brief. I ask you to hold a public hearing, as we've advertised for that, and then to continue the item. I'm confident that we could have this and would plan to have this back on your next agenda. There are two different subject matters contained with this particular proposal by way of proposed language changes, changes that would impact, I could say, impound storage or tow yards. It's kind of the main event. And I won't speak to each of the different places where changes are proposed, but rather would just say that the intent of what's before you tonight relative to tow yards is to be more permissive about where tow yards can be located in Spanish Fork, while also being more clear about what a tow yard is, and by default then, more clear about what improvements are required with a tow yard. Trying to draw as much as we can a bright line, clearly define what a tow yard is, for example, compared with like a wrecking yard or that sort of a thing. So propose to make it more permissive by allowing tow yards in our industrial one zone, which is, I think by area, one of our more, one of our larger zoning districts, there are more acres in the industrial one zone than, I believe, any other zoning district. And that really is the long and short of the proposal relative to, again, I'll lump everything together and say tow yards. The impetus for this, incidentally, is a need that exists to relocate a business from Springville to Spanish Fork. That's not the only reason that's before you tonight, but that is one thing that, that kind of tripped a meter that had us put this together and bring it forward. There's a business in Springville that needs to be relocated to accommodate the new, I'm gonna call it the 2700 North interchange. And after working for a couple of years, BUDAT was not able to find a place to locate that particular business in Springville or elsewhere along I-15 corridor, and they've located a site in Spanish Fork on property that's zone industrial one. And for better or worse, a conversation with BUDAT about, well, is it possible to locate a tow yard in your industrial one zone? That was, that was a large part of what kicked this off, along with some other things, but that was kind of the trigger. Any questions about that? Not the most exciting subject matter there.
Dave, just, sorry. Just reading the enhanced definition of impound storage tow yards, a facility that provides for the temporary storage, do we need to define temporary?
We talked about that and decided not to, to give us a little bit of latitude as we work with people.
Your own discretion as to how long you think they can keep it there.
Non-permanent.
Non-permanent, yeah. Not forever.
That's a good question. What defines that?
And in my opinion also, that might matter. You know, if someone has a tow yard, for example, where there happen to be ten vehicles in the tow yard at any point in time, maybe nine of those ten have only been there for a week or less, but there's maybe one that for some reason is there for a couple of months. You know, that doesn't become a problem versus a yard where ten vehicles stay there for two years, and it's clearly something distinct. Right, they're, they're clearly not operable, which is another thing that, that we're trying to, to define more clearly and that sort of a thing. I hope that helps by way of an explanation, but.
Yeah, you're not tying your hands to a specific timeframe.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
So Dave, we, we go into public hearing, maybe there's a comment, maybe there's not. You make a substantial change to this next time. If someone wants to comment on it, they don't have that opportunity.
I think the council would have the discretion of the mayor as to whether you took comment. Yeah.
Okay, but it wouldn't be a public hearing necessarily.
We wouldn't. You wouldn't be required to hold a public hearing, is how I'd look at it. You could take comment if you wanted.
Right, yes.
So what kind of, are you thinking a substantial change to what is in front of us today? It could be substantial. it could be substantial.
It could be, yeah. Including we could do away with the concept of making our provisions for tow yards more permissive. That's kind of the fundamental question I think we need to sort out.
Okay.
You've also got Dave in, in here, downtown commercial, the part that was removed. Are we, you want to discuss that at all?
Yeah, pretty straightforward. Also a big deal. It's with a lot of regret that I proposed this. It's going to sound like an excuse, but honestly, I believe that allowing uses in an environment like what we have downtown that are going to have some propensity to attract people downtown, maybe an hours that complement a lot of other businesses, weekends, evenings, and that type of a thing. And maybe drive a lot of traffic, meaning get a lot of people going downtown for different reasons. That's just a textbook thing to try to pursue, to keep an environment like our, our Main Street from Center Street up to Fourth North is vibrant and active and lively and inviting for commerce as it can be. And yet, we have a failure, I'm afraid, in terms of just a relationship that exists with an event center that was permitted because of a change that was made just a couple of years ago. And the impact that that particular use has had on a particular block and neighbors and things, it's really, really bad. There's nothing that we can do about that particular situation now, as long as that business stays operating and doesn't expand or do different things like that. But at the same time, I am proposing this as an opportunity to make sure that, that that situation's not replicated elsewhere downtown. And I'm trying to think of what the takeaway is in terms of a learning experience. I don't have that figured out entirely yet, but don't want to make things any worse or allow for things to be made worse. And therefore, we've proposed that event centers be eliminated as a use subject to conditions in the commercial downtown zone. And.
Dave, I have a quick question for you. In planning commission, you talked about how those that are permitted to currently have an event center downtown will still be able to. Does that change when, if a new owner of that building takes over? Or is it if that business, so let's say that business went away in a different business of that same use, but same owner was there, would that still be permitted? I just wasn't clear on that from planning commission.
I want to take a stab at that and invite Mr. Pikel to correct me if he feels like he needs to. I think it's a matter of use.
Okay.
As long as the use continues.
As long as it's.
Doesn't change in, you know, a noticeable way, doesn't expand, that's a key. If the use is discontinued for more than a year, then a vested right evaporates. But ownership of the business or the property or different things like that, that doesn't make.
You got it, Dave.
Cap you.
Thanks, Dave.
Which is important because if the current use stops and the ownership doesn't change, what Mr. Anderson just said, the evaporation, to use your word, would, would be in play as well.
So theoretically, it could be there for the next forever, five different business owners, per se, but we're just trying to make it better eventually.
I, that's the hope when we're dealing with non-conforming uses. This change would make any event centers that exist, you know, legally licensed and operating in the commercial downtown zone, non-conforming. And the hope, generally speaking with non-conforming uses, is that over time, they become conforming.
Right. You answered it.
I guess, I mean, that's sort of a side effect of it. But what I thought we were saying is, we've prevented something we probably shouldn't have. We're going to learn from that and not do it again.
That's the most immediate impact, I believe.
Long term, it may get to what Jesse talked about, but in the short term, let's don't do that again.
So Dave, what about, not to cut off Shane's question, but to add to it, rather than eliminating the use, why not try and fix the problem that's causing the use, which in this case would mean additional parking? Allow it, but you have to provide even more additional parking than, than what we had listed initially.
I think that is a very viable option. And if that's something that you would like us to look at, I agree that that, that's another potential fix, for sure.
Because in other zones, that already exists, right? And we already have that parking laid out?
Yeah. The commercial downtown zone is really unique. It's the only zoning district that does not inherently require off-street parking. In fact, the little bit of parking that's required for event centers makes that use unique. That's, that is the reason for that being a use subject to conditions is to require a certain amount of off-street parking. And I don't, does that help? And it's, I mean, if that's a preferred route, we could certainly retool and bring something back that would maybe focus on more of the symptom than the problem. I, I don't believe the use is as big of an issue as, as the lack of parking has been.
Yeah. Well, I think this is a good step to, of the immediacy of, of making sure something else doesn't happen downtown to gum it up even, even more. But, but still allowing the current, you know, current owner and operator to, to run their business and be grandfathered, if you will. But, but yeah, there's, needs to be changes if, if future people on, future businesses want to run a similar business on Main Street, it's going to have to change. So that might take some research of what's happening in other places, what's been successful. But it seems like the immediacy is probably a good thing to remove it from that, that area in this Title 15 adjustment.
So remove it and then direct them to do some research to potentially bring it back to Kevin's point?
Or do you just wait until there's a need? And then wait until a business approaches and says, hey, we'd love to do this?
Say that too.
Say, well, right now, it's not in the code. To put it back in the code, this is what would be required. Are you still interested?
Good way to do it.
Dave, are there, does the city have any limitations as far as, you know, thinking of the event center, for example? Let's say they wanted to invest money in purchasing homes behind them, but they needed additional parking to the point that they needed to put a parking garage or a two, two-level parking. Would we allow that? Do we have anything in our code that prevents that type of thing?
We have some things that come into play that would maybe make it difficult in most of our zoning districts to build what we, we would expect a parking garage to look like, which oftentimes there's structures that get really close to property lines, both right-of-way be, you know, close to a sidewalk or a street and close to side property lines without much of a setback. That's probably the one thing that I think somebody looking to make that kind of investment in a property would want the city to, to change. But aside from that, it could be a matter of needing to change height requirements as well for structures. Our code's silent really on that as a structure type. So we would probably just say that that's the principal structure on a property and it has to meet the, the setback and height requirements for the particular zone that it would be in. And I think that, that in most cases would require some retooling. The commercial downtown zone might be the exception where we don't require much by way of setbacks. So.
Has anybody in your time with the city, has anybody proposed that or any developers brought that up with you?
No, not yet. I think it'll come someday.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave? We kind of get a twofer here, the couple adjustments of Title 15 in the, in the tow, tow space, tow yard space and the, and the event center space. If there's no other questions right now for Dave, I'd entertain a motion to go to public hearing, see if there's other questions.
I'm going to go into public hearing.
Public, second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Euler to go into public hearing. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item B. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilman Marshall. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're out of public hearing. Any other further discussion about, about this? Dave, is there, can it kind of be split up? It feels like we're talking about maybe removing the tow yard portion of this until we can get some more information. And, and maybe we're okay to move ahead on the, on the event center.
We could split it out or we could leave it together. Given the action that's already been taken on the event center part of it, that's a pending ordinance.
Okay.
And therefore, if somebody were to make an application, for example, tomorrow for an event center in the commercial downtown zone, we would put a hold on that, pending the outcome of this conversation. So for just ease of moving forward, I would probably suggest that we leave it together.
Table, hold.
But we can do whatever we'd prefer.
Okay. Okay. If that's easier, that way, it sounds like I'd entertain a motion to continue or table. What did we?
I don't know if we came up to a.
I move to continue item B, ordinance amendments to Title 15 to modify the city's regulations for tow yards and the uses allowed in the downtown commercial zone.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, a roll call vote. Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Took?
Yes.
And Councilman Cardon?
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Okay. Item B is continued. Thank you for the good discussion. Thank you, Dave, for the information. Item C, public hearing to receive input from the public, respect to the issuance of approximately $50 million in, of sewer revenue bonds and the potential economic impact that the improvements facilities or properties to be financed in whole or in part with proceeds of said bonds will have on the private sector. Mr. Seth Perrins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, our last council meeting, we approved a parameters resolution that set the, the stage for the possibility of bonding for our sewer revenue bonds to finish the project of the construction of our water reclamation facility. This is a time set aside by state law for us to receive public comment regarding the issuance of those, those bonds. This is something that we've been working on for the past four or so years, been planning for this in our rate structure as, as rates have slowly moved in, moved upward each year with a target of rebuilding a water reclamation facility. That project is currently underway, a couple of years into it. Maybe just to be a reminder, we bonded in 2000, early, let's see, Q2 of 2021, I think it was, for about $90 million. Of that 90, about 80 of the, $80 million was used for the construction of this reclamation, water reclamation facility. We did not have the plant designed at that time, but what we did have is record low interest rates. And so at that time, based on the best estimates that we had from our engineers, we picked a number that would not be more than we would need, probably less. But to take advantage of the millions of dollars in interest savings by, by having an interest rate that was, I think, 1.61%. Since then, the, the water reclamation facility was designed and also the world inflated. And so we, we certainly saw, had seen record cost escalations across the United States, not just in our projects, of course. Our water reclamation facility comes in at a total price tag of about $130 million. 20% of that is paid for by, by Mapleton as a joint owner in the facility. And this is a joint loan. Mapleton will carry about 20% of the note on this loan as well. We carry the loan, but they have through contractual relationships, the obligation to pay their portion. Because of the cost escalations, we've also been very diligent in seeking out grants and have been successful at that. I believe we're at about $12 million in, in some state and local grants to bring the cost down. So 130 million is 118 million, which brings it a lot closer to where we, our final estimates would have put it somewhere. We estimated somewhere around 110. And so with those grants, we've been able to bring it a lot closer to that estimate. The parameters resolution states $50 million. We won't likely bond for all that, probably a lot less, or I think we're around 40. Yeah, somewhere in that, in that range. But we always give ourselves the parameters in case there's something that, to go more in case there's something that is unforeseen between now and then. Any questions on that? Jonathan Ward from Zions Bank is here. He's the expert. He can talk about the market. He can talk about the nature of a revenue bond and different things like that.
So this bond should finish off what we need for?
Correct.
Finish this.
For the water reclamation facility, yeah.
Do we call it a water reclamation facility revenue bond instead of a sewer bond? Or do you just avoid the word sewer?
If Chris Thompson were here, he would say, I would like to avoid the word sewer.
You want people to buy these bonds.
But I think, I think, I think sewer revenue bond is probably what it is. That's more known in the industry. We used to call this plant the wastewater treatment plant. And Chris would like a more positive name. So we're trying this one out. How does it feel?
I like it. Yeah, a little long, but it works.
Well, that's.
Takes a little use, getting used to.
It's different than, it's three initials instead of four. But I do admit on the budget, as I have a tab called WRF, I don't know what that is. I know what WWTP was, but.
So what is different between last week or two weeks ago and this?
Last week's, or sorry, last council meetings was a parameters resolution where you're telling the world, hey, this is what we're considering to do. This week, this council meeting is, I want to say it's a 30-day wait. We tell the world, this is what we're going to do, and you can come and talk about it in 30 days tonight. And so tonight's simply the public hearing. There's no action tonight, just a receiving comment.
And then after this, is there an approval after this? Or is this?
Nope. Once this is done, the parameters resolution gives the mayor, finance director, me and Jonathan, the authority to go and sell the bonds. And so we would then do the various steps to go and, and get the best price for, for the money that we're going to get.
Got it. So let's assume someone tonight comes with fire and brimstone and says, you should never do this. We're not taking any action tonight. We're saying, thank you for your comment. Okay?
That's correct.
I think it's important to note, though, that we can't really not do something. The building is being constructed.
No, I'm not suggesting we stop. I'm just trying to get my head around the.
Tonight is, is listening only.
Okay.
Yeah, the resolution also allows the council to rescind its, its resolution. If based on the input of the, of the residents in the hearing, it seemed like it was in the best interest of the city to put a stop on the project or to stop on the financing. You could do that because the resolution always allows you to change your minds, if you like.
So we could change our minds tonight if we wanted?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Will you talk, Jonathan? What, we, we have been kind of waiting to do this, hoping that we'd see some changes. Maybe give the council an insight, what you're seeing in the bond market.
Since December, since, well, yeah, since December, the rates have come down pretty dramatically. We saw over the last month, month and a half, about 30 to 40 basis points reduction in interest rates on the US Treasury side. Municipal bond rates have followed suit. So that's a positive for the city. The city has two options to do the financing. You can sell bonds in the public markets or you could sell to private markets, directly sell the bonds to a single investor as opposed to multiple investors. The, the direct market hasn't really changed as much. It's not driven as much on supply and demand. It's driven by investors' cost of funds, which haven't necessarily come down like the public market rates have. So what we're seeing currently is a direct purchase option, costs the city about a four and a half percent interest rate on average. In the public markets, you're probably about a point lower than that, about three and a half percent, maybe between three and three and three quarters for 20-year sewer revenue bonds. We'll call them sewer revenue bonds. The, the financing, that's, that's not bad. It's not as good as 1.61%. And that's sort of the world we're living in right now. And we do suspect, as you've probably read and heard all over the place, that the Fed or the Federal Reserve would downsize their target on the short end of the yield curve. That could mean longer-term rates as well will also drop more than they already have. So as we decide the best avenue to approach investors, whether it's public market sale or direct purchase, those are, those are things we're keeping in mind. We want to be able to preserve the flexibility on this particular bond issue to refinance and capture additional savings, lower interest rates, if indeed that happens. It may not. And so we're trying to, trying to evaluate whether or not the cost of preserving that option is worth it. option is worth it to the city and to what extent it would be, it would make sense to do that. But we have seen a reduction in rates, and so that's a, that's a positive for this particular financing and others.
Thanks, Jonathan. Any more questions for Jonathan on this before we go into public hearing? I'd entertain a motion, go into public hearing.
I move to go on to public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Marshall, to go into public hearing for item C. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item C. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion, go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing. Discussion's up here. Any more discussion about sewer revenue bonds and the amount of $50 million to build the sewer treatment plant?
Seeing no comment, I will take no action.
You'll take no action?
Okay.
Okay. Perfect. Appreciate it, Jonathan. Thanks for your help with this and all the other bonding issues that we've, we've got in Spanish Fork. We appreciate it.
Chris will probably share some numbers with you in our meetings in the next couple of weeks, but the the number, the amount of money that we will have saved by having the first portion at 1.61% interest rate versus waiting until we would have had everything designed and bid out and maybe more traditional course is is a few million dollars. It's not a small number, and I'm really pleased with that. You know, with hindsight being what it is, if you ask, well, what would you do differently? I'd say, I would have bonded for more than, right? But there's just no way to know that. And being able to blend the two, I'm really, really excited. Jonathan reports today that rates are coming down again, or at least a little bit. And if we could get a three and a half to 3.75% rate on this bond and combine it with the 1.6, I think we'd all be pretty happy with with something, you know, in the neighborhood of two and a half to 3% on our money. That's a really great rate for the residents, so thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Appreciate that. Thanks again, Jonathan. Okay, it takes us to the new, new business section of our agenda. We've already covered item A, so on to item B, ordinance repealing SFMC 7.28.110 regarding the fire retirement board. Mr. Pecel.
Mayor and council, we have a, an ordinance that establishes a retirement benefit for volunteer firefighters. That's in Title IV, and it gives the finance director the authority and duty, I guess, to manage that fund. The ordinance also has a built-in, what's the word, adjustment, annual adjustment to that, that, that benefit. Then in another title, in Title VII, we have this firefighter retirement board that was supposed to give its advice about, to the council about this benefit. So adopting, we revised the ordinance a couple of years ago with the firefighter retirement benefit, I recall. And since doing that, the, the reason for the fire firefighter retirement board's existence has kind of evaporated, to use that term again. And so that's the recommendation, to simply delete the firefighter, volunteer firefighter retirement board from our code and just have that be administered by the finance director. Any questions about that?
So just to be clear, nothing, no retirement?
Not changing the benefit.
Things are changing. It's just the way that it's administered.
Right.
Which is our, what we're basically already doing.
Yes, it's kind of a, we have a conflict in our code with, we have the, one, one title says the, the finance director monitors that and administers that, and the other title has this board that's supposed to give its advice to the council. But so we're just streamlining, clarifying, simplifying.
Shane was trying to get a board removed from his list.
So you're taking that?
I've got one removed from my list.
Is it this one?
This one.
I think Kevin had the most, so he might have taken his.
No wonder you didn't redo yours.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't.
Yeah. It has to be an official act, and you have to consult with the city attorney to be able to get a committee removed.
I should point out, if you do adopt the ordinance to repeal that section, there's also in, in that ordinance, a clause that releases any of the currently existing members of that board, and just thanking all those who have served over the years in that role, so.
Awesome.
Yes, he's, his name's leaving my head now.
Lynn Jones?
Lynn Jones, Mr. Jones, former fire chief for Spanish Fork and longtime firefighter. I know every year was a discussion about this board and getting together, and really, it was put with the finance clerk already of what those monies were, what, what the retirement aspect was, and.
Right.
I was the pretty face there. So there's not a lot of reason to still have the pretty face there.
Yeah, and maybe just to reiterate what Jesse, Councilman Carden just said, that this is not impacting nor intending to impact what the city set up many, many years ago in support of those firefighters and EMS personnel that have served according to the terms of that, and it's been a great benefit to them through the years. Not adjusting that, just this section here, and, and, yeah, Lynn Jones, and, and we've had a few, we had the, a past Fire Association president that would, would also serve, and then we had a citizen-at-large. It had been Dwayne Hutchings. I don't know if you remember that, but I'm not sure that he's been, been there the last year or so, but, yeah, they've been good. Really, I think they met once a year to talk about things, and like you said, they, oftentimes they'd turn to the finance guy and say, what do you think? And so they shouldn't change anything.
Still taking those checks out to the retirees?
Absolutely.
That have earned that?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, any other questions for, for Vaughn on this?
And I think, sorry, I think Lynn, I think Lynn's probably been involved in doing that. Like, I think he enjoyed that, and he is such a great human being. I think we certainly would lean on him anytime he would be willing to do that. I think he enjoys that. I think he enjoys that. I won't speak for Lynn, but, but he certainly can continue to play that role. He's, he's such a wonderful, wonderful resident of our community and certainly a longtime service giver, so we are grateful for Lynn.
And if there was still yard of the month or yard of the year, or whatever we did, we had to retire that, too, because how many times?
Just always there?
I went it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just, it became a fixture in his garden, just yard.
Put that on the street sign that's, you know, the, the direction post there, just yard of the year, too.
Yep, yep. Donnie Dunn was trying for it for a while, but, but nope. Mr. Lynn Jones has always had it, so pretty good stuff. Okay, if there's no other questions for this, I'd entertain a, a motion for item 9B.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve ordinance repealing SFMC 728110 regarding the firement retirement board.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. A roll call vote here. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Okay. Item 9B is approved. Takes us to 9C, the GPS contract for the Oaks at Spanish Fork.
Look at that tie.
You're gonna have to.
It's a no.
You're gonna have to up your, up your passion here.
You like it?
Looks good.
Thank you. It's the first time I've ever worn it. Mayor and council, good evening. This is the moment you've been waiting for. We'd like to propose to install, replace and install the current GPS systems in the AD golf carts that we currently lease. This is going to prohibit Mike and Shane, when they get together, to be able to go off-road. But it will benefit both the management and our patron experience. On the management side, it's, it'll be touchscreen, they'll be able to do some of the normal things that GPS units can do at this point, touchscreen, Bluetooth, you'll be able to listen to music. It will give the capabilities for the clubhouse to contact patrons out on the golf course, track where they're at, track battery usage. They'll be able, gives us the option to install geo fencing, which will include Powerhouse Road as well. And the lease of this will cost $42,000 annually on a five-year lease or 60-month lease. I believe that Vaughn has reviewed this contract and is okay with how it was written up. And the goal, we propose that we should be able to pay for some of it, if not all of it, through advertisement through these GPS systems. So again, this will prohibit Shane and Mike some of the luxuries they've had on golf carts in the past.
Dale, the bonds. I was thinking that it was to nudge them when they're playing really slow.
That, too, yes.
I was thinking that I saw the advertisement that other places that use this, when you get a hole-in-one, you can report that you got a hole-in-one, and then when you get back to the clubhouse, they have your award ready for you for the hole-in-one. So I thought that's what you were referring to when.
Were you talking about?
Yeah.
Sure, we could work something out.
The hole-in-one prize will be ready.
Not sure why you guys are using carts anyways. Should be walking.
We should be walking.
That's a good point. Bronco, you mentioned that advertisements on the GPS will help pay for this. Can you explain that a little bit more?
So we currently have that on our, and I think there's a demand, from what Dale told me, is that there is a demand for advertisement, so it'll be one per hole. Seth, tell me if I'm incorrect.
The advertising that we have today runs through a different company. They sell it and receive the revenue from it associated with the GPS units that we have on the, on the carts that we have. This will completely adjust that, so we will have the relationship with the advertisers, and we'll receive the revenue for that. So that'll be a completely new revenue source for the golf course that should offset the cost of this upgrade 100%.
Perfect.
And since I don't golf, and I think you all should be walking, I was really grateful that we came up with the idea, or that, you know, it was proposed to us in work session that it would pay for itself through the advertising, so I like this idea.
Has nothing to do with advertising. It just.
No, it's all about advertising. It's all about the funds coming in.
But if, if you do happen to be on a golf cart up there, and I was surprised that Dale reported this, that at least half of your GPS units right now on the carts are not working. So this, this does, I mean, yardage was not being read, which is completely why Shane suffered.
That's true.
His golf game suffered last year was because he wasn't getting the correct yardage.
There'll be no more excuses.
There'll be no more excuses, as we'll have it down to the right yard.
Yep.
And.
Now it'll just be bad.
Yeah. Thank you, Bronco.
Great. Any questions?
Quick question, Bronco. About timeline-wise, what are we looking at?
I'm not sure.
Soon.
Yeah.
How's that for a day?
It's really definitive.
Yeah.
Soon, who's a member?
The desire is that these are in place before golf starts again.
Okay.
And when is that? I don't know.
Typically, not allowing carts out till usually first part of April.
Yeah, I'd say April-ish.
To web in March, and so we are usually having to walk a few months, they think.
But that's the goal.
On the contract, it says May is when we pay it, so.
Do we have any agreement with the current marketing that's using the GPS that we've got to wait for that to expire? Can we cut that off whenever we want?
I don't really answer that question. I'm assuming that it's easy to cut off, but I don't have the answer to that question. We'll look at that. Thank you.
Ryan mentioned it, I thought Ryan had mentioned that it dropped off at the end of the year. It was a year thing. It dropped off in December.
Yeah, so we're good there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bronco.
Thanks, Bronco.
Okay, if there's no other questions for item C, I'd entertain a motion for item 9C.
I move to approve the GPS contract for the Oaks at Spanish Fork.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Carden. A roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck. Just thinking.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Motion passed with a slight delay from Councilwoman Beck, who thinks we all ought to walk.
Let that be in the record.
Let that be in the record. Item D, resolution adopting a policy statement regarding the establishing, establishing public infrastructure districts or PIDs. Mr. Vaughn Pecel.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a little, what do you call it, a work, work group that's, that's worked on this PID policy. A PID is a public infrastructure district. It's a separate legal entity from the city. It has the power to tax real property and to bond for public infrastructure. So that's the purpose of a PID. We've had Shane Marshall, Jesse Carden, Seth, Jordan, Dave, Jonathan Ward, who was here earlier, Randy Larson and some others from his firm work with us on this policy. The policy does a few things. It establishes the criteria to evaluate a proposal to create a PID, keeping in mind that the creation of a PID is solely up to you as the city council, whether or not you want to do it. You don't have to approve a PID, even if it looks great and it complies with the policy. If, if you decide not to do it, that's totally within your prerogative. The way it, it begins, they, they submit a petition and a letter of intent. They describe their purpose and need for public infrastructure to be financed through a PID and creating a PID. They define the area. It has to include the consent of the property owners that are in the, in the PID, and if there are any voters, typically not as we look at our city, but, so it's 100% property owner consent and voter consent. And so you'll get, you know, a little area, it's usually going to be project-focused by one, one project. You could have a larger one that is maybe islands of, of different properties. Then, as, as that comes in, we have the petition, the letter of intent, the city staff would review it and go through the policy and the evaluation criteria and make a recommendation to the city council. It's not a formal recommendation, it's not a formal public body, it's just city staff acting under the direction of the city manager, making recommendations. Then, if the council decides to, to do that, then the staff would work with the, with the proposer of the, of the PID to create a governing document, and that governing document would set, kind of like with the bond, where you talk about your parameters resolution, it would be a, kind of the parameters of what the PID can do. You could set the maximum mill levy that they might, they might impose on the property in the, in the PID, and, and other things like repayment of bonds and things like that. You could, you could set guardrails for this PID to, as it exists in the future and functions. Fees would be entirely paid by the petition sponsor. We would use outside consultants, our municipal finance advisor and our, our bond council to help us evaluate a PID and, and help us create those. And let's see. And finally, it would be a resolution to create the PID and, and then they're off and running. They can levy their tax and, and bond for public infrastructure. It's really a tool to give them access to the tax-exempt bond market, to get public infrastructure. Keep in mind, it's not their private infrastructure, it's not their parking lots and internal storm drains, it's public infrastructure, roads, sewers, or wastewater collection facilities? And lift stations and, and power lines and substations and all those things that are public. Any questions about the policy? I know it's several pages long.
Can you have a PID within inland port?
Yeah, certainly. The, the port project area, the VERC project area is, is one thing, and it's created, and it, it has its own purpose to, to collect tax differential as properties are developed, they become more valuable, and so that tax differential that's generated can use, be used to finance infrastructure. In fact, that tax differential can be then used to, not, not directly, but indirectly be the repayment of the bonds that can be issued by a PID, if that makes sense.
So that property owner could use that tax differential to repay?
The PID would be a government entity. I would hesitate to call them a property owner. That entity, that government entity, the PID, could issue bonds, and then as tax differential rolls in, they could repay it over time.
They wouldn't be committing those.
No, it's not pledged.
Can use that.
Yes.
You can use that, but it's not, the bond's not backed by.
If, if the project area, if that's their purpose, yes, but it's, it's certainly not pledged as security for those bonds.
Okay, good. Only the, the mill levy.
The mill levy would, would be that, what they could control and pledge that, yes.
All right. Let me maybe walk through a thought on this, Vaughn.
Please.
With the question that's asked, so keep me in bounds, Dave, Vaughn, Jordan's not here, but I, I think with, with the VERC project area, you'll probably see a couple of different PIDs. Probably, let's, let's say that, I think you'll have at least two types. One, you might see a PID created that will cover the entire VERC area. I don't know if that's the case, but let's say for, for sake of discussions right now it is. And you, as a council, if you were going to create that PID area, you could say, because it's going to cover all of this area, we are not going to allow you any tax diff, we're not going to allow you to do any mill levy. And that one can only be funded with tax differential. Then you can have one that's a lot smaller. Maybe it's land that's owned by developer A and developer A owns, I was going to use me, but that's a really bad example because I don't want to create any conflicted ideas here. Developer A owns 40 acres right here and they're going to do a project that's got some roads and some water and some, all these different things that may add up to $10 million worth of, of infrastructure. And they can, on those 40 acres, create an, an infrastructure district that you allow them to create.
Is this 40 acres within the VERC project area?
Mm-hmm, yep. So it would be a PID inside of a PID, right?
Yeah.
And then, but you would, in this one, say you can have tax, you can have property tax of up to, and, and the policy outlines the amount up to that you can, you can allow them. There's kind of a default and then there's an up to amount. And then if they're created, they'd have to follow the statutes and laws to, to enact that property tax. But they would then be taxing themselves. And so they would pay more property taxes to the county and then they would get that property tax back that would then be pledged to pay for the bonds associated with their, their infrastructure bonds that they took out. And I think it's important to distinguish in that setting, you are giving the developer who is also the landowner, the ability to raise taxes on themselves. But if we were to do one grander, you, you probably wouldn't have, you could, but you probably wouldn't do one that would increase or allow for property taxes to increase.
Right.
Because the intent of the VERC project is not to increase property taxes on the whole, but to use that tax differential to, to pay for some of the, or all the infrastructure that it can.
In that scenario though, as written, if you wanted to put a PID all over it, you would need 100% of the property owners to say yes to it.
Including that 40 acre.
Only if.
Is that only if they're putting the mill levy?
The mill levy, although I, I thought it was only if the mill levy. I could be wrong.
Not sure.
But I think it's only if the mill levy.
Another part of that, maybe to clarify, is that we, in our policy, have outlined that it can't be put on residential.
Yes, that's right. That, thanks for bringing that up. I should have mentioned that. This is not for residential development. It is for commercial industrial type of development.
So a resident wouldn't inadvertently get a higher tax than, say, another resident in Spanish Fork?
No, they don't want that.
Thanks for sitting on that, Shane and Jesse.
Good times. It was actually fun. It was not a problem at all. Fun is not the right word, but.
It was beautiful tasting.
It was. It was. It was bringing back some memories.
Let me see if I can look at that answer on whether the 100%.
Why, why would you have a PID on the whole thing? What would be the, if you weren't going to take a levy? So you could access the bond market, but then you have nothing to dedicate.
The tax differential.
It's two different, well, it's two different things though, because the, the tax differential is, this was collecting virtually zero property tax now.
Sure.
And if I'm improving it and putting $3 million worth of property on it now, I'm accessing just the difference that I created in tax.
Right.
But the PID inside of that PID is saying.
No, I got that part, but the, but.
Why would you?
Why would you PID the whole thing?
Well, it's.
If you're not going to levy a tax.
Yeah.
And you may not. I would, I would lean on, yeah, I would lean on Randy and Jonathan to help us.
I guess it doesn't matter. We're going to be able to.
Yeah.
I guess the bigger product, the biggest point there is, we would have the ability to say yes and no to the big one, yes and no to the smaller one. And those creating that tax, the increased tax are taxing themselves.
Yeah, when we, yeah, that's the intent with how we wrote the policy.
The differences, the differences now is that you're, you're, you're switching it to those private entities accessing the public market that they never could before.
That's by far the biggest.
All that offsite improvement is now, hey, it's, it's, it's on you to go get that done. And if you can pay for it with just the differential, you'll probably do it. But if you start doing the math on what all those offsite improvements cost, they probably are going to say, well, I'm going to need, I'm going to need that plus I'm going to raise my own taxes too.
Definitely.
And see if you guys will go for that to get it done.
And, and with the differential, I think our hope and plan is that the differential will really be focused on regional things and, and they will still have local public infrastructure, right? Their out, their portion of the street, their portion of the water lines, et cetera. But the tax differential is going to be focused on, because it's a regional water line, instead of being eight inches, it's going to be 10 or 12, which costs more and, and the, the regional, the differential will pay for that, that enhancement. The road would be, you know, a 40 foot right of way and now it's a 70 foot right of way. And so the, the differential would pay for that regional, that extra amount. And however we set that up, what we want to make sure is that any, where we're using the tax differential to do regional things, we want to make sure that we can spend it anywhere inside of that VERC project area.
And.
However they want us to do that.
And, and you don't foresee a circumstance where we're still not doing CRA or CDA.
Do that.
You still, you still do those project areas because you define them of where they're at and then this could be another tool inside those.
It could be.
CRA or CDA.
And I think one reason why you'd, you'd look at doing a PID versus a CRA bond is a CRA will always have a connection back to the RDA, right? The city. Whereas a PID is its own, you create this external government entity. And so the bonding, all of that is, is on their back and not on our name. And so it's like, you know, they're not using our credit, they're not using our, our, our name, right? It's their own thing. And so that's, that's another benefit. We, we don't have the, the same connection to the bond nor we don't have, we're not, our, our residents aren't having to pay for something if they can't make their bond payments. That's between them and the bonding world.
The question of whether the voters and the property owners, it's to create the PID, you need 100% of those. Just verified from the statute. If there are any registered voters and a petition is filed, it must contain the signatures of 100% registered voters and 100% of surface property owners in the applicable area consenting to the creation of the PID.
So then for the greater PID, it would probably be kind of a Swiss cheese look where we'd have a handful of property owners that say, we want this, use my land.
It doesn't have to be contiguous. It could be islands of projects.
Seth, I have a couple of questions about the property taxes with the PID. So in a PID, you get a PID approved, they're getting a bond for their infrastructure and that bond is backed by them increasing the property taxes within the PID area? Who sets the property tax rate? One, is one question. Are there limits as to how high they can set that, which I think we've talked about? And then also, how long is that property tax rate locked in before they could adjust or change?
Those are really good questions. So in a way, the city council sets the maximum. In the governing document, like I talked about, the parameters of the guardrails of the PID, you can say what their maximum mill levy can be. And then they can go up to that max, but never, and so they decide up to that max how much to impose. The PID, the district itself imposes the mill levy. Does that make sense? And.
Cars in perpetuity? How long?
No, just, just to retire the finance, to retire the debt.
The bond is paid.
Once the bond is paid, they can adjust that.
It would go away.
It would go away.
It would go away entirely.
So page four of this is kind of where you see some of that in, in the B, other criteria. And then paragraphs one and two outline what, kind of the structure of how that would be put together. And they can do 10 mills and then I think state law allows 15 mills.
Up to 15, yes.
And so you, you're kind of allowing them to do up to 10 mills. And I think our rate is one. So their, their rate that they could put on themselves is 10 times what our city rate is, which is huge. But again, remember, chances are each of these PIDs is going to be the land that the developer owns themselves, so they're simply taxing themselves.
Now with that taxes, that's not replacing, because when you look at your property tax portion of your property taxes, you've got county, you've got city, you've got NIVO. It's not replacing that, it's just adding to what already exists.
Right.
And so they're going to have, again, back to my example, I got those 40 acres and they've got $10, $10 million of infrastructure. That developer's going to have $10 million of expenses one way or the other. And so they're going to go to the bank and get a loan for 15%, making up all these numbers, right? But they can go through this route. This is a tool the legislature has allowed them to use. They're going to tax themselves because they own the 40 acres and they're going to now go get that money through a bond market. And because of how the, the analysis that they've done, they can get up to $8 million of the 10. They can't get it all because, you know, that's just, they just can't get it all out of there. But they can get eight at seven and a half percent. To them, it's worth it because they can get, you know, they can cut their interest rate in half and, and spread it over 20 years versus, you know, the lending terms that they might get at, at the institutions where they would be able to get their lending. So this is a tool that they will want to use as they apply that tax to themselves. You, as, and this policy gives you that kind of guidance, you want to be very careful if it's starting to cross over a lot of different boundaries because you're going to be giving somebody the ability to put a tax on land. And this group, as they looked at the policy, felt very uncomfortable about saying anything about residential, because as soon as you do that, I own 40 acres, but I'm going to subdivide it down to 100 different units. And as soon as I sell off one, two and 100 units, now I am taxing those individual homeowners differently than everywhere else in town. For what? You know, whatever the reasons might have been. But the committee, as they reviewed that, felt a lot more confident that the business owners, commercial and industrial, would be more understanding and aware of the PID being in place than you and I might be as we go buy our house. You know, we're going to be sitting at the, we're going to be sitting at the, the title company and reviewing and the title person's going to say something about a PID and blah, blah, blah. And I'm going to be like, just get me into my house, I'm ready to move in tomorrow. And, and we were really uncomfortable with that concept of, of how that might impact a homeowner. And so I think that's, that's why this policy focused on other, other uses than residential, because commercial and industrial is probably more aware. I see you kind of.
Some of us were not as uncomfortable as others. I mean, if you look at the, the total math on a development, back to your analogy, if you can get a $10 million loan for 15%, there's a, there's a cost to that. If you can get an $8 million for 7%, there's a different cost to that. So if you assume all of that is passed on to the consumer, which is the homeowner, you could actually save them money by taxing them at one mill. Just, I mean, you'd have to do the total math, but you could actually save the homeowner money because they had to invest $10 million to even be there. Someone had to invest $10 million to even be there. So I 100% agree.
Are you saving the homeowner or are you saving the developer? Because they're still selling the home.
It depends on how you, it depends on how you look at the total finance package, right? If, if you assume that a development costs $40 million to do, someone's passing that along to the consumer. If you can lower that initial cost by 30, the assumption would be they're only passing $30 million onto the homeowner.
The weakness to, the discussion always comes back to what will the price of the home be sold for? And if it's sold at market, then everything that you just achieved with that gets lost.
And, and that is why we didn't do it.
Exactly, yeah.
And then I'm not suggesting we do it, but I'm just.
That's a great clarification.
That would be the financial reason.
If, if we could ensure that the savings went to the end user, then this is a great possible tool, I think, for residential development. But there's no way we can guarantee that.
It could also be a way to open up a, a piece of land.
Right.
That we don't burden the rest.
Totally undevelopable otherwise.
Yep, that we don't burden the rest of the community on.
And, and although, because I think this policy doesn't speak to it, I don't think that ties your hands forever. It just signals to the world as they come in and look at our policy, if this is what you want, chances are that's not really what the council's looking at, so.
And the very definitely first step into this, let's focus on commercial and industrial and make sure we get it right and understand it fully. I mean, it's several pages long, nine, but so let's get it right and let's get a few under our belts before we even entertain the thought of somewhere.
I think to what Seth just said too, and this document is a governing document, so like we, every PID that comes across, we will have to go through and approve. And some will try to push some of these guide rails and some will, you know, just stay within the bounds of it. And I think that'll be something that we have to weigh every time a PID comes in. And like Shane said, until we get a couple under our belts, there was a lot of things that we weren't necessarily comfortable in taking any type of risk with because of the fact that we don't know what those that come before us are going to bring.
I don't think it, it should be overlooked, the, the potential economic impact that, that you could have here. You have, you have some land, especially if we're talking the industrial, commercial areas, you have these huge investments that are offsite investments, meaning, hey, this, here's the, here's the 20 acres I own. But then they come, hey, this is what I want to build on this 20 acres. And they get with Jared and they thought they liked him until he tells them the news that, well, you could pledge all your 20 acres and 20 more acres and that's still, you probably still couldn't borrow enough money for the offsite power, sewer and water that has to come through these other properties to get to your property, to service your property. And so what, what do they say? Well, how am I supposed to do that? And Jared says, I don't know, hope that, hope that other properties develop, I guess, before you develop, before you want to, right? And so it's, it's the waiting game of how many years, how many five years and how many times does it turn into decades of that not getting done? And the solution is, well, we're not going to, the taxpayer that's here isn't going to go put that in for you and, and then wait to get reimbursed, even though we do that on some aspect of impact, impact fees, you know, they pay some impact fees when they want to do it. But, but this says, okay, I can access the public market and go, go get that $10 million for offsite that my lender would not lend to me and get that in. Now does my project pencil out? It might pencil out if I increase the tax on that, on my own area to pay for it. Is there, is there still profit margin there to do it? And now you've just sped up, you know, economic impact, if you will, to the city as a whole for jobs, for, for, for tax, you know, for, for activity that, that otherwise you just have to wait field by field, 20 acres by 20 acres that might happen over 100 years. Who knows?
Yeah, I think too, we shouldn't be naive to think that if it's a, even if it's a small PID, that, that developer that's implementing that PID today is going to be the owner forever.
Sure.
Right? They, there will be someone paying this bill when it comes due. And in, in some cases, the developer that did it, and in some cases, a future property owner. So the, the, the challenges of putting, of doing a PID in residential still apply to industrial and commercial. The exact same thing. The, the goal is to, to make that project, like you just said, Mike, viable and pencil and pass that to the consumer, right? Whether it's a, a industrial consumer or a residential consumer. But the hope is that with an industrial, at this point, industrial and commercial will be more apt to look at it and say, I understand that completely. I know what I'm getting myself into and I'm willing to continue forward. And unlike 100 different residents coming into a spot. So the challenges are the same.
They're also selling a widget.
They, they are selling a, yes, correct.
They, they have a going business that they can say, this is what I have to sell this widget for in this commercial use. The residential, they're not selling a widget. The widget is one time sold, that's the home, that's what it costs, that's one sale. Might be sold over and over again. But that business can say, all right, well, in this warehouse, we're going to have to sell X amount of widgets with this profit margin.
Overcome that, that mill. Yep, for sure. And there's a reason, there's a, there's several reasons why the Benjamin X looks like the Benjamin X today. One of them is the, the level of investment needed to develop it is higher. This could help offset that.
Lot of ways around the, all the way around the airport too, that, that come into play for this area.
One more way of, of, one more tool in the toolbox to, to help implement our, our, One more way of, of, one more tool in the toolbox to, to help implement our, our, our plan.
Vaughn, anything else on PIDs?
No, Mayor. I'm sorry, I came down, sat down to look at that question, and so I don't have anything further to present.
Okay, that's good clarification there, that 100% of the voters inside that area would.
Voters and property owners need to consent to the creation of the PID.
Perfect. Any other questions for Vaughn or Seth? Jared, anybody on that? Okay.
A motion?
I'm, I'm ready for a motion.
All right. So having been involved with the, the review and process moving forward, I would move to approve the resolution approving the PID policy.
I'd second that.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Cardon. There's no other questions on the motion. It's a roll call vote. Councilman Cardon?
Yes.
Councilman Took?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Item D is approved for PIDs.
Mayor, maybe just a, a question for Mr. Anderson. You had a meeting today with a number of developers in the VERC industrial project area. Were any of them ready to submit an application to start a, start a PID review and potential creation process?
We might see a couple by the end of the week.
A couple of PID applications, yeah. So this is very timely and something they've been watching. In fact, I think we, we sent this off to a, a group of developers to get their feedback, knowing that they'd probably be using it fairly quickly to make sure that it was at least understandable and if they had any feedback.
Very good. Tell them to get the, get the application going, get the investment, get the utilities in the ground. Let's get going. Okay, item E, reuse authorization contract, Spanish Fork and Mapleton. The city of, what do we call Mapleton? What's their, what's their logo up there? It's not the city of peace, that's Salem. What is it? I don't know.
I can only think of bad things to say.
I'll text Dallas. I'll find out.
The city of, stay off my lawn.
It's not that.
No?
Mr. Pecal?
Mayor and council, the water reclamation facility, the new one, will treat affluent to such a high water quality, it can be reused. And reused in the city's pressurized irrigation system. To do a reuse project, you have to have a reuse authorization agreement. And that's what this agreement is for. And it's also a little bit unique in that, as was discussed earlier, about 20% of the inflow into the plant, the water is, the wastewater is Mapleton's. And so this agreement would allow the city to use Mapleton's water because they won't really have a way to pump it back up the hill to use in their city, at least not in the near future. So this will preserve their water from forfeiture in a way. If you, if you collect your water, you treat it, you can reuse it. But if you let it go into the wa, the surface waters, like Dry Creek and out to the, to the lake, then you're, you're relinquishing your control of the water at that point. And it's, then becomes the waters of the state for reapropriation. So we're going to gather our water, reuse it, and we'll also use Mapleton's share to prevent that from, from forfeiture, if that makes sense. It provides compensation to them for fair market value in the agreement as well. Also, I should point out that the, Mapleton can terminate the agreement at any time, or so can Spanish Fork, for that matter. If they want to do a project and somehow reuse their water, they can do that.
Perfect. So secondary water, this is water going on our lawns, going on our ballfields?
No, it will be good water to put on lawns and ballfields, absolutely. I don't, maybe I misunderstood what you said.
Not potable water, not, not drinking it.
You know.
But let's not have our kids run through the sprinklers or drink out of the hose. Well, I guess the hose would be.
It's not, it's not going to hurt you.
I know, it's, it's amazing to me that this can now go on our grass.
We're going to have a glass of it when it's all done.
No, we're not.
So we're not, this is not that yet. This just gives us the ability to do that. So there's, there are a few things that we still need to do in order to reuse the water. But this gives us the rights to reuse our water. So we're not.
There's a process of filing with the state, right?
Okay. You'll let us know when we are, so we can tell.
You'll be very aware of that. There's a lot more processes. But the state's doing some changes to water policy, and there was a window of time that ended already that said, if you want to ever do this, ask now or forever hold your H2O. And we got in time. Our water at the treatment facility comes, as was said, from Mapleton, too. But we don't have rights to use their water. And so they ask for their rights and then are giving those to us. Because it wouldn't be worth it for us to pump it back up to Mapleton.
Right.
Because it already came down here. So that's what this is for. It's just putting all the steps in place so that if we ever want to do it, we can. But we are not doing that today.
And if we want to do it and use Mapleton's share, we can.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Your kids can do whatever they have been doing, but just know that sprinkler water is river water.
Yeah, yeah, I did know that. Okay, thank you.
Drink from the hose bib of your house, but not from the sprinklers popping out of your ground. Mapleton, small-town, big heart, that's what it is. Small-town, big heart.
I like it a little better than mine.
We appreciate it.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions for Vaughn on the reuse authorization contract between Spanish Fork and Mapleton?
Just a quick one, Vaughn. Just curious, if we were to use the, this water, reuse the water, how would it affect the amount of water that we've been using for the secondary to water our lawns, for example? Does that really cut down on that amount we use in the future?
I wish I were as smart as Chris Thompson. I, I would be able to answer that. But I don't know what proportion, to be honest, of our PI water it, this would represent. I'm not really sure.
Well, it's about 6 million, it's about 6 million gallons a day. So it would be a significant amount of water into the water system if or.
And goes through our sewer treatment plant per day?
Yeah.
Are we, if you reused it, that'd be quite the addition to your.
So does the state limit how much we can reuse as compared to how much has to flow to Utah Lake?
Honestly, I haven't got that much into the details yet because we're so far away from it. This is just us.
My understanding is that.
Getting a place in the line.
You can treat it and reuse it as long as you don't relinquish control of it. It's our water rights to use.
Interesting.
Use and reuse.
Until we put it in the ditch, and then it's.
Yeah, then, then it's gone its way downhill, so.
Yeah, so as soon as we put in the ditch, somebody else has rights to it.
It's a lot of water.
Yeah. So again, there's a lot of stuff that we don't know simply because we're years away from it. But whenever, if ever, whenever, if ever we get there, this makes it so we can do it. Otherwise, we lost it forever.
Interesting, perfect.
Thanks.
Great question. Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion for item E.
I move to approve the reuse authorization contract for Spanish Fork, Mapleton reuse project.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Euler, a roll call vote here. Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Cardon?
Yes.
Councilman Took?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Item E is approved. I think we got all the As and Bs and agenda items in the council. Anything, or in the agenda, anything we need to revisit before adjourning to closed session? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to go into closed session for strategy sessions to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property and discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck, a roll call vote here. Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Took?
Yes.
Councilman Cardon?
Yes.